Could be on at all times.
Okay, could everyone take their seats, please? Wow, what compliant people, look at that. Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's City Council meeting of September 5th, 2018. And before we start the meeting, could we please have our invocation by Ron Bailey, New Beginnings Church? Pastor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, it's an honor to be here tonight. Heavenly Father, we want to express our gratitude to you for what I believe you've put in the hearts of our City Council members, their staffs, as far as dedication and commitment to this wonderful city. We are grateful for them. Father, I pray tonight first that you would give each of them your protection. These are days of unrest and violence and strife. And I pray for the City Council, the members of staff, members of the Police Department, members of the Fire Department, and first responders, that they would be given your safety and your protection. And then, Lord, for our City Council members, we pray that you would bless them with your wisdom. Scriptures declare that the wisdom that is from above is first pure, and then peaceable, and then easy to be entreated. And so I pray that the choices and decisions that are reached will result in peace in our city and blessing to our city. Thank you for our leaders, we ask you to bless them. And Father, we ask this in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. I'd like to call to order the September 5th, 2018 City Council meeting. And Chief, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, unbreakable, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Director Maloney?
Freya? Johnson Santos? Lewis? Zilera? Valalta?
Here. Do you have a quorum? Item number four, consideration of approval of agenda. And before we go to the approval of agenda, Council members, I'd just like you to know for item seven, the City Attorney and I will not be in attendance for the Community Economic Development update for the downtown because both of us own property within the 300-foot level of the downtown. So we'll be stepping off, and Mayor Protem Lewis will be conducting the meeting for that portion. So could I please have a consideration of approval of agenda? Do I have a motion? Ms. Freya?
I move to approve the agenda as submitted.
Mrs. Santos?
Second.
Okay, motion by Freya, second by Santos, in order to approve the agenda, all in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Let's go on to item five, public forum. Members of the public may address the City Council members on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the City Council, which includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items, and speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the Council Chamber informational table. When you approach the podium, please state your city and your name, city of residence and your name. If you have a cellphone, please turn them off or place them on vibrate. Is there anyone who wishes to speak at the public forum?
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Nick Gomes from Merced. I am a representative, the district representative for Congressman Costa in the Merced office. I was newly appointed to the position in July. It's a pleasure to be here at the City Council meeting for Los Banos. Scott, hello. Part of my responsibility is to help represent the constituents of the 16th District, which includes all of Merced County. My responsibilities is to the west side of the county. So I will be point of contact for Los Banos, Dos Palos, Hilmar, and Chowchilla also, further down in Madera County, of course. Part of my responsibility and part of what we're doing as an office, regardless of political affiliation, regardless of who you vote for or who you don't, part of our job is to make sure that the bureaucracy of the federal government is a lot easier to negotiate. And part of our office is helping to deal with any federal issue, anything dealing with the IRS, immigration, veteran status, anything of that nature, where if any of the constituents have problems, myself and my two associates in the Merced office are perfectly willing to help, especially kind of to expedite matters in any of the bureaucracy. I just wanted to come and make my presence known, let folks know that we are fully staffed in the Merced office for the Congressman's office, and to make our services available. Other than that, I will leave some business cards with the City Clerk. If you have any questions, we're always there in the office in M Street in Merced, and happy to help.
Well, we could all use a tax refund, so work on that for us.
Well, we're already running a few for folks that said they had tax fraud issues, so we're definitely helping with that, so.
Well, thank you so much for coming this evening.
Appreciate your time, thank you very much.
And leave your business cards with the City Clerk.
I will. If I do have to leave, I'm double booked today, so I have some other things I had to take care of tonight, but thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Thank you, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum?
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name is Kelly Turner, I am from Atwater, and I am here to also let my presence, our presence, be known to you. We, the, I'm the founder of Simple Equation, which is a nonprofit, it's a youth organization. Currently, we are doing work with SWAG under Prop 47, but we were also awarded the Viper Grant through the DA's office. And so we will be doing, providing services for at-risk youth here on the west side. We will be sharing some of the same space, well, hopefully sharing some of the same space with SWAG. We are working with Rob Baker to hopefully rent some of your office, some of your space facilities. And we will be working, we're working really closely with Dr. Marshall in the school district, and they, so far the school district has referred 17 youth to us. We'll be working with youth that have any type of gang-identifying activities in their background, who are on the brink of expulsion or suspension from 10 to 17, male or female. We'll be providing services, the Police Department handles the referral, the school resource officers handle the referrals. The referrals come to ourselves, Simple Equation, and they go to the DA's office. We do an intake process, we get them involved. Some of the things we'll be working on are, if you're familiar with, I'm pretty sure you are, restorative justice and conflict management and resolution, self-esteem, working with SWAG, so those that have an interest in sports will help them navigate and hopefully get full ride scholarships in whatever sport it is that they play. Just make them, help to make them productive members in society, work readiness is what we'll also provide. We do excursions on the weekend, we call them enrichment trips because we realize that exposure is a part of development, just like, you know, your standard academics. And we sneak little learning experiences, if we're in Yosemite, we use that nature as a way to bring some healthy conversations, and those are the places where we really do bond and we're able to kind of get to the root cause of some of their issues and make a difference in their lives. So we just wanted to let you know that we're here, and we look forward to actually sitting down with each and every one of you and sharing more about our backgrounds and who we are and why we're doing what we're doing. And though it is a two-year grant, our goal is to secure additional funding and be here well beyond two years. We've been doing the same work in Merced, and I've left you some information for each and every one of you for over seven years, and we've served hundreds and hundreds of students. And so we want to continue to grow and to have roots here with you in Los Banos.
Well, we welcome your services here on the west side, and we're happy that the west side is finally being recognized and more services are coming our way. So anything that we can do, five council members, anything that we can do, City Manager, City Staff, to help you, please let us know. And I would ask you one favor, we have a pastor in back of us, Pastor Bailey, and Pastor, maybe if you could talk to the other youth ministers or the other pastors, and maybe there's some referrals that could come your way or her way through your groups, at-risk youth, we greatly appreciate it. So if you could hand him a business card, and maybe we can expand our services a little bit more by getting in touch with the youth groups here in town.
Absolutely, I will do, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, hang on just one minute. Okay, go.
Thanks. What are the age groups you said you work with?
10 to 17.
10 to 17, at-risk age, that's for sure. Thank you very much.
And unfortunately, we have an eight-year-old so far that's been referred, we have 17 referrals, but one is an eight-year-old.
Well, that's why we have you there, isn't it? Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum?
Good evening, Mayor and Council members, Jennifer Joaquin from Republic Services. I just wanted to stop by this evening and kind of touch base on what I was here for back in June. I actually was talking about recycling and what the proper way and what the improper way is. We just want to make sure that the public is aware of what is and isn't correct to go in their bins. The acceptable materials would be paper, that'd be office paper, shredded paper, newspaper, and mixed paper. We also take junk mail, and then, of course, a few things that you always see and everybody puts in there is cardboard, cans, glass jars, just making sure that those are cleaned out. The things that we do not want to see in the recyclable bin would be styrofoam, that's the number one thing we see, that is not something that's acceptable, along with food packaging, napkins, paper towels, any toiletry from your restroom, that's also something that's not accepted. We also don't accept lamps or light bulbs or fluorescent tubes, along with shrink wrap, and then, of course, trash doesn't go into that bin. So with that being said, I just wanted to bring up the fall event that we do have coming up here with the city, which is the cleanup, which is scheduled for September 22nd, 7 to 2 o'clock, at the Merced Spring Fairs parking lot. Looks like we are accepting a lot this year, we're actually accepting household hazardous waste. So no sharps and no medical waste, but with that being said, that is paints, which is typically oil-based, and then the light bulbs and fluorescent tubes is something we're accepting this year. Mattresses, and along with the mattresses, we have batteries, tires, mattresses, and green waste. So if anybody has any questions or anybody from the public, they can stop by the office at 409 Mercy Springs, or they can give our office a call.
Let's see, does that come, that's, her cleanup event is after our second City Council meeting, right? Yeah, so maybe you could come back to the next City Council meeting during the public forum and just repeat that again to let people know. And then I would ask at some point, if you have a PowerPoint demonstration, maybe to go over the type of waste in the cans. Maybe come back and we'll give you a genized item, and you can just kind of educate us a little bit more and have some PowerPoint, okay?
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for coming. Oh, yes, go ahead. Would you hang in, Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you.
I may not have said it, but yes, we are doing electronics, yes.
Okay, thank you, that was it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum? Yes, sir?
For the record, Greg Hosteller, 923 Pacheco Boulevard, Los Banos, California. I'm here to talk tonight on a number of things, a little bit now and a little bit later. But one of the things I want to say, Mayor Valalta, in all my time in this county, which I was born, actually, so actually I'm having my 20th anniversary of my maybe 30th or 40th birthday coming up soon. I don't have birthdays anymore, but I want to tell you that we deal and do business in a number of counties and communities in California. And I can tell you that under your leadership and under this leadership of this council, that your staff and your department heads fit at the top. I can tell you, we deal with very directly on day-to-day basis with your Public Works Department under Mr. Facium. And the engineers have very good respect for him and his decision, how he handles them professionally and representing the city. Now, I've not had that opportunity to say this for a number of years, because I realized that home building was stalled for almost 10 years in the Central Valley. And you deal with your additional department heads, let's say, I was talking to Chief Hurley earlier. What I like about what's going on in this community is you've hired what I call people that live here. He's been a resident here a long time, and you look at, Chief Breezy was raised here. And they don't have to be raised, it's nice to have him be a resident here. Because I deal with some communities that they use legal counsel, and it's nice to have Bill, a legal counsel, he lives here. And because they have a stake in the community and you see him here, so that's the benefit, because there are stakeholders here. And with that, I want to say that we're the only builder, Stonefield Home and the house seller companies, that build more than 15 homes in this county and live here. Merced does not have a local builder that builds more than 10 homes. The negative part about that is that all those profits and the money that is earned leaves the community. And the good part about that is they're very good builders. But their corporate office is not in Merced County, they don't buy pickups in Merced County, and they don't buy a pick at the fair. But it is what it is, and I'm here tonight to compliment you and your staff for what they've done. Am I out of time yet? Not yet. But I can tell you what it is, we haven't always been able to do that. And I, when, part of this tonight is about giving back, and that was instilled in me and my late wife Kathy Hosteller, and that'll come up later. But part of that is the turkey giveaway during the holidays, which I know you've been there, Mayor, passed now turkeys, and I've seen Scotty, and if I forgot anybody else that shows up, there, raise your hand, but it's part of giving, and tonight you're going to see more of that. And it's not often that you get compliments here. Generally speaking, as I see public forum, there's a fair amount of complaining going on. What I'm here to tell you is, as a builder and a stakeholder in this community, how well things are being run here, and how the input you receive from the council, the planning commission, you've got a great planning commission, by the way, and your planning director, Stacy Susa, you have one of the best. I have to tell you that Merced has a very good one, too, and they're two of the best I've seen in a long time anywhere, and it happened to be both of them female. And one of the things my wife told me a long time ago, if you want to get something done right, Greg, you ask a woman to do it, and she's pretty much right about that. Don't you agree, Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure you do. Sorry about that.
She's still here, yeah.
Well, your wife is here, I didn't realize that, yeah, I'm sorry about that. But it's mostly, and you look at your, is it City Clerk? Yeah, City Clerk, Lucy Maloney, great, another great person. So you've had the most homogenized, smooth-running, I'll tell you, that we deal with in California. Now, we do some work in Carolina, and they have it going pretty well over there, but we don't have to deal with all the regulations we have in California. So I think I'm out of time, right?
31 seconds.
Well, let's see, who did I miss? You know, I have to talk about Ms. O'Brien here, because her father and the council at that time is the one that got me into home building, because there wasn't a lot going on in Los Banos in 1984. And they said, Greg, we need to generate some builder fees, and we want to have local building going on here. And O'Brien was behind that, and I've kept him busy a long time, because he's a retired highway patrolman, and he spent some time chasing me around and writing me tickets in early days, trying to train me to be responsible, that's what he said about that, but I'm not sure paying all those fines was responsibility, but, and I think he was talking about maybe giving back to the community in a way of fines. So that's all I got to say for tonight for now, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And just to echo the point, is the hiring practices this city has for bringing staff on and the present staff that are here, and I'm very proud of the council also, that works well together. So, thank you all. All right, let's go on to, is there anyone else who's going, who would like to speak at the public forum? Come on down.
You remember me? Well, recently I received a citation for having a canopy in my patio, so I was just wondering the exact laws about canopies in Los Banos.
We are, that ordinance hasn't passed yet, is it still going to come back? Yeah, 19th? It'll be back on the 19th.
So there are no laws about canopies, or?
Oh, yeah, yes, they're not allowed, yes.
They're not allowed?
They're not allowed.
And then on the 19th, we changed that?
No, 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 we're working on to, it's a finite set of, we had to redo the ordinance. But canopies are not allowed, and I'm not supposed to discuss back and forth.
Oh, okay, so show on the 19th for the next?
Yes, so would you, what I would like you to do is, I can say this. I can say that Stacy Elms, raise your hand, Stacy, okay? And you can speak to her, and she can explain what's happening right now, and then the 19th, when we approve our new ordinance, okay?
Okay, so should I go there right now?
No, 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 not during the meeting, later on.
Can you please go back and state your name for the record?
Yes, my name's Adam Courtney.
Okay, and your residence is?
C-O-U-R-T-N-U-Y.
In Los Banos?
I live at Illinois Avenue, yes, in Los Banos.
Okay, Steve, Los Banos?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. She will explain everything to you, okay? What's on now and then what's going to happen later on? Okay, all right. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public forum. And let's go on to item six, consideration of approval of consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine, we voted on in one motion, unless removed from the consent agenda by a City Council member, and tonight we have?
Items on the consent agenda are as follows, warrant numbers 211811 through 212335 in the amount of $2,441,137. Minutes for the August 1st, 2018 City Council meeting. Approval of response letters from the Los Banos City Council and the Los Banos Police Chief regarding Merced County Civil Grand Jury Final Report 2017-2018 regarding the Los Banos Police Department. City Council Resolution Number 5996, rejecting the bid for one new 2018-2019 model brush chipper. City Council Resolution Number 5997, authorizing award of construction contract to Hobbs Construction, Inc. for Crest Hills Park Arbor Project in the amount of $244,856, with a 1% contingency in the amount of $2,500. City Council Resolution Number 5998, accepting the Iowa Avenue Waterline replacement as complete and authorizing the filing of a notice of completion with the Merced County Recorder. City Council Resolution Number 5999, approving a tentative agreement memorandum of understanding by and between the City of Los Banos and the Los Banos Police Sergeants Association from September 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2020. City Council Resolution Number 6000, amending Division 4 salary schedule employee classification relating to changes to Section G, Police, associated with the Los Banos Police Sergeants Association tentative agreement memorandum of understanding. City Council Resolution Number 6001, adopting a revised budget for the 2018-2019 fiscal year as it pertains to expenditures in the amount of $3,000 for Information Technology Professional Services account, 610-410-100-231. And the items are to be removed, to be approved as submitted.
Okay, is there any City Council member who would like to remove an item for discussion? Okay, Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to request to remove item E and F.
Item E and F, okay. Would you like to make a motion, subtracting E and F?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted, minusing items number E and F.
Okay, I have a motion by Mrs. Lewis, like the second? Mrs. Santos?
Second.
Okay, motioned by Lewis and second by Santos to remove the consent agenda as stated, minus E and F. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Okay, Mrs. Lewis?
I was reviewing item number E, which is the renovation of the park. Mr. Mayor, I was reviewing item number E, which is the renovation of the park over on Pioneer and Black Hills. And one of the things I noticed is that we didn't really have any renderings in here of what this park is going to look like upon completion. There is a schematic in the project with some numbers on it, but there's no scale to tell me what anything means. And so, you know, I'm really happy that this park is going to be redone, but I, for me, it's important to know exactly what it's gonna look like in the final stage. So I wanted to question why we didn't have any renderings from the architect who is providing the sketches for us.
Just go ahead and punch in. You should, mic should go on. You don't have, there you go.
Should be doing this long enough, I should know that.
We had it, I had it switched.
Oh, okay, tricking me. The reason is, is a cost factor at the rendering. We did not have an architect do this, we had an engineer do this. And that's, that's, that is the reason. It gets paid out of a district. As it is, you can see the 1% contingency is very, very small, because that, that district can only afford the 1% contingency at this time. But that is the, that is the reason.
Okay, so is, I'm sure there's something that's been provided to Public Works as to what the outcome of this is going to look like. Is there anything that you can give this council at a, at a later meeting or put in our mailbox to let us know what it's gonna end up looking like? Because I can't tell, I mean, I see some sketches here from your, I guess it's from Odell Engineering, and as I said, there are numbers on here, but it, there's no scale to tell me what those numbers mean.
Yes, I can provide that. On the second sheet, there actually is some scaling factors there, you can kind of see in relationship to the park, how big a structure we're looking at with five picnic tables, two barbecue pits, two serving tables, it's quite a large structure. But I can look in the documents and see a more definitive scaled version that I can put in your inbox.
Yeah, I think that would be good, if you can give each council member that information in their mailbox, and certainly I'll be satisfied with that. But, you know, I can only assume that these five tables are here, but I didn't know what some of the other structures were that were in the scale, so it was confusing to me. And certainly, with that amount of money, I would like to see a nice park, and I think it's going to be, but I cert, you know, I'm the kind of person, I like to cast my eyes on what I'm going to approve.
Just to briefly summarize, it's like I said, there's five full picnic tables, there's two built-in barbecue pits, and two long-serving tables on each side, so that you could have two separate party groups going on. And there's solar lighting underneath the canopy.
Okay, so I'll look forward to that.
But I will provide you, probably this sheet L3 full-scale.
Okay, thank you.
To all of them.
All right, and that was it on that one. And item number F, the only question I had was, I noticed, and I'm happy that we have a local that's gonna be doing this project, but did we receive any other bids on this project at all? Because the?
This is a notice of completion, this is, we, they've already done the work. This is just to bring it before the, to file a notice of completion, so that we can pay the retention off. Yes, if I remember, I believe there was three or four bidders that did this job.
Then I understand, I understand the reasoning behind it. Okay, that was it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, would you make a motion, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that item number E. Submitted.
Okay, Mrs. Santos?
Second.
Okay, motion by Lewis, seconded by Santos to approve item E and item F on the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Okay, we're now gonna go to item seven, and the city attorney and I will be, again, stepping off the dais for the downtown update, but we will return for the marijuana regulation. All right.
So I'm gonna ask the public to bear with me, because this is going to be my first time operating our new equipment here on the dais. So if I make a mistake in turning on the wrong mic, just be patient with me until I get the right one. So now we're moving on to item number seven, the downtown, Las Vanos Downtown Update. And this is, we're going to have a presentation by our Community Economic Development Director, Stacy Elms. Did I get it?
That was my fault, Deborah.
Was it on?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Protim Lewis and city council members. So tonight, we are going to have a presentation on the Las Vanos Downtown Revitalization Plan. And this presentation is going to be given by Sharon Silva, who's been contracted by the Downtown Association. But I first want to start off with introducing Sharon and her credentials and a little bit of her background. So from 1995 to 2002, Sharon was the Executive Director of the Turlock Downtown Association Main Street Program. And from 1999 to 2015, Sharon was the CEO of the Turlock Chamber of Commerce and Convention and Visitors Bureau. There was a three-and-a-half-year period during that time as the chamber executive, as the CEO, that she had the title of both the Downtown Association and the Chamber as she was working on the revitalization project for downtown Turlock. She is certified from the National Trust for Historic Preservations Main Street Certification Institute and Professional Downtown Management. She has a bachelor's degree in organizational communication from CSU Stanislas. She is the U.S. Chamber Institute in Chamber Non, she's certified in U.S. Chamber Institute in Chamber Nonprofit Management from the University of Arizona. She is also certified from, with economic training from Oklahoma University. She was the Western Association Chamber Executive of the Year, that's one of the awards she's received amongst many, and also the California Main Street Executive Director of the Year. And she has been a civic leader in her community, which shows her vast knowledge of the San Joaquin Valley. So Sharon was, obviously based on her resume, was instrumental in the development and implementation of the redevelopment and revitalization of downtown Turlock, and was asked by the Las Vanos Downtown Association to provide a workshop, this was back in April, to discuss developing a revitalization of Las Vanos's downtown. This presentation that she gave was to property owners, downtown merchants, and interested residents. So with that, if Sharon can come up and provide you with that update. So she has a PowerPoint presentation for you tonight?
Excuse us for a second, Sharon.
Oh, there you go.
Oh, okay, thank you.
All right.
Well, Stacy, thank you very much for, what a great interview.
Just a moment, let me give you.
We're okay, good, okay. Well, I would say, good evening, Honorable Mayor, so I'll say, good evening, Replacement Mayor. How about that? And city council members. We are very excited to be here this evening, and an update, and do an update for you for the downtown revitalization and beautification project that the team has been working on this summer. This has been an organic process and is a full-team effort with the property owners. First, I would like to explain and introduce one person before I go any further, and with my mind, I might forget, but it's a very important person. I'd like to introduce Sandy Lames, who is the president for the Downtown Association, and she's here with us this evening, so. Thank you, Sandy. I would first like to give you a little history to how we have gotten here before you tonight. In December of 2017, Jean Lee, who I had known for years, who had been in Turlock during the period of time that I had been fortunate enough to work with the downtown organization and be a part of the downtown revitalization, gave me a call, he found me in Las Vegas, how I don't know, but he did, and asked if I would come and speak to a group when I came home at Christmas with my children, if I would come and speak to a group regarding downtown revitalization efforts. I was more than happy to do that. I get very excited when I talk about how the downtowns can develop and where you can go with them. In April, I was asked to come back to do a workshop for the downtown businesses and property owners. There were approximately 30 in attendance, which about one-third were property owners. After much discussion, at the end of the day, it was decided to move forward and to set a plan of action. One of the first brainstorming sessions that took place that day was how the group wanted to brand the downtown to a look that was something that said, this is Las Vanos. That was a decision to develop a vision for the downtown area. It didn't take long for a discussion and a decision to be made to keep the historic preservation of the downtown community. It was at that time, I suggested for them to form four committees, not knowing I would be the one who was asked to come back at that time. The four committees were Vision and Beautification, Marketing, Activities and Events, and Finance. I asked who would consider taking the leadership roles. Everybody looked at each other in that room, everybody wanted to do it, but everybody was busy. However, everybody raised their hand to do something. So I asked who would take on the leadership role and one of, and chair one of the groups. After the four chairs were selected, they were each asked to develop their own team. In May, I received another phone call, asking if I would consider coming back to consult and oversee the process. It was agreed that I would come and spend the summer working with the groups, and I want you to know, my cat and my husband came with me. And they don't want to leave, but they're going home, that's okay. So we've had a great summer. So it was agreed that we would come and spend the summer working with the group, and at the end of the summer, it would be decided if the property owners, who really are the major stakeholders, would want to continue with the project. Everyone was in agreement. One of the major objectives of the project was to improve the economic vitality of Las Vanos Downtown. The first thing we did was to set a mission, a vision, and a purpose statement, and we developed them. And if you don't mind, I'm gonna read them to you, so that you know what they are. Las Vanos' mission is, Las Vanos Downtown is the place to go for doing diversified business from professional needs to dining, retail, and entertainment. The vision for Las Vanos offers the historic commercial environment of yesterday while offering the modern needs of today. The streets are lined with trees, and as you stroll the downtown, you will find a diversified cultural climate. Top restaurants are available with choices of outdoor or indoor dining, fabulous little one-of-a-kind shops, and music on the streets. The professional buildings serve you with your diversified business needs. The environment of the building holds the history of the community, and the colors enhance the architecture of the past. The art culture that is brought into the mix enhances the beauty of the surroundings and tells the story of the history from history to present. The purpose for all this is because the downtown is the center of your community, sometimes referred to as the heart of Las Vanos. When a business is looking to relocate or bring in new development, one of the first locations that they look back, back at in a community is the downtown. The community is looking to revitalize and develop a beautification project to enhance the location and properties of the downtown. The committee is looking to upgrade the historic preservation of the downtown community through facade upgrades in color, art, design, and signage and entertainment. The purpose of this project is to bring the diversification of culture, business, entertainment, art, and restaurants to the downtown to serve the community for visitors and for the surrounding Once the mission and vision and purpose was made, this team hit the floor running. They went to work and has worked very hard through the summer, making great progress. This evening, each committee chair will give you an update report on their part of the project. Since there are no RDA funds, like when we did Turlock, that made a big difference, no bonds like there were, other government funding of any type that we know of, we found some, some benefits for new business. The group knew, excuse me, the group knew, in order to do this, the property owners would have to help carry the heavy financial load. The first thing that happened was Greg Hosteller, who stepped forward and offered some matching funds to over, to matching funds to have over the next five years, period. This is mostly for brick and mortar for the outside beautification of Main Street, downtown Sixth Street, excuse me, Sixth Street, I've been corrected on that, and I won't forget. You'll be hearing more from Mr. Hosteller later this evening. Since the first thing the team wanted to do was set a vision and start developing a brand, it was decided to begin with a facade program. This program was developed to be funded with matching funds from private donors. Again, with Mr. Hosteller's donation, we are able to develop a facade program. Of course, with private funding, the property owners do not have to worry about prevailing wage. If we went for a grant, that would be different. At this time, I would like to invite Mr. Taylor Wolfson to come forward to talk about this facade program that we have done. And in front of you, you have packets, and one of them is the facade program. It has the ring, the binder. I would like to recognize the fact that Mr. Wolfson, Mr. Calgen, along with some others, helped with the developing of this program. And I would like to introduce Taylor to talk about it.
Thank you, Sharon. Hi, council members. My name's Taylor Wolfson. I live in Boulder Creek, California, but my family and myself has several pieces of property in the downtown area here. As Sharon was talking about the facade improvement program, we put together a package, an application package, which I think you have in front of you, if not, there's one in the back here. And I'm just gonna talk a little bit about it. The, the goal, obviously, is the improvement of the downtown area, community, Sixth Street or Main Street, depending on where we're at. This package is available to property owners or business owners, if the business owner has the property owner's approval to fill out, and it is going to provide matching grants up to $50,000. So if someone wants to do a new sign, or someone wants to do a new awning, or some general facade improvements to their building, there will be funds, private funds available to them. It's currently set up that the matching grant would be, excuse me, matching funds would be up to $5,000 for signage, up to $10,000 for awnings, and that leaves a balance of $35,000 potentially for further improvements to the building. It's not intended for anything majorly structural, it's intended to beautify what's currently there. There has been a lot of thought and outlines as to what's going to be improved and what will be accepted, as far as the improvement has gone. And I believe you're gonna hear from somebody else who is heading up another one of the committees about how we're trying to make the downtown unique and yet vibrant, and yet, what's the word I'm looking for? Similar.
Cohesive.
Cohesive, thank you very much. So with that, if, I will turn it back over, if anybody's got any brief questions about that? We'll have questions, okay.
I, I wanna stress, because I'm gonna, the next thing I'm gonna be doing is introducing our chairs, who have taken on the responsibility this last three-and-a-half months. And this next person that I'm gonna introduce has truly gotten in with all four feet, hands, and anything else that she needed to do to start this program. And she has a big task in front of her, because she's working on the vision and the beautification project. She has a large committee that she works with, and she's been an absolute delight to work with this summer, and has become a friend. So I would like to introduce Leslie Velata. So, I would like to introduce Leslie Valata.
Thank you, Sharon, and thank you, City Council and staff. We talked in our meetings about what makes a nice cohesive downtown, because we really are branding ourselves collectively as the place to be, the place that you want to bring friends, the place where you want to do business, the place where you want to show off what you really look like as a city. And so, to do that, we took a look, good, hard look at what we are, and we find that we are a different animal. We have different types of architecture. We would like to keep a lot of that architecture, enhance a lot of that architecture, and some of it starts with color. So, the first task was, please stop painting, everyone. Everybody seemed to want to paint mid-June and July. And start thinking about what you're painting, why you're painting it, how you look, and how you make a neutral palette that is cohesive with others around you without being exactly the same, so that you can enhance your building, enhance the experience of the people that are in the downtown, looking at you as a business, and maybe wanting to enter and do business with you. So, on the outsides, we had worked with about nine members of this team in two small group meetings, and with the help of some color swatches from Sherwin-Williams, and we could use any color paints, but any brand paint, we'd looked for collections of colors. I'll have to show the back later. Collections of colors that will be working with each other and yet being different. And we didn't just go to a paint fan. We went to collections of colors. So, you have the body of the paint, the accents, and a little bit of trim work perhaps. And some of our buildings don't need a heck of a lot of this, because their main building color is brick, or there are tile accents. So, this is what we're hoping to evoke by adding the pictures of the tile on the side to remind people that we are looking at all of it. We would like people not to paint over their tile or brick until a really strong analysis takes place. If we need help, our committee can help those people that are thinking about painting. And the colors that are on this chart are available at the city planning department, so that you can look it over. And also, the names of the colors and the codes are on the back. Now, if you would like to take a look at this, I'm sure you can go in and talk to Director Elms, and she will be able to share with you the vision. And also, the fact that we have a small number of papers that say, "Stop, think, analyze what you have before you start doing these projects." And, excuse me. And they have packets at your desks here, and so you can take a look at that. It's really a worksheet to help you make decisions based on what we're trying to accomplish. And we are trying to keep people from using the building, main body of their color palette there, from being their logo colors, so that signage can be used to enhance that instead, instead of the main body. One of the things we don't want is for a business to say, "Look at me above all others. We're in this together." So, we would love to have people notice you. We just want you to be noticed in a positive way, and we're trying to lighten up the palette when people do paint. So, that is, that is the culmination of our things. We've also talked about other aspects, which I'm sure Sharon and the committees will talk about, that have to go along with the painting. Thank you.
Thank you. One of the things that she's speaking of is the signage that we want to look at, and she's looking at awnings and some other things. But those are really important to take a real look at, and we'll be working with the city on that as well, so. The next presenter that we have is the gentleman that made the first call to invite me here. And I, I do thank him for that. It's been a lovely summer, and I really enjoyed Los Banos. But Jean has stepped up, Jean Lieb, and he has put a marketing plan together, and I believe that's also in your packet.
Yes.
It is? Okay. And so, at this time, I would like to call Jean to the podium.
Thank you, Sharon. Good evening, council members, city manager and city staff. My name is Jean Lieb, publisher of the Los Banos Enterprise and the Enterprise Media Services, and longtime resident of Los Banos. Our company, the McClatchy Company, is a full-service marketing agency, and our team has created a marketing plan to promote the Los Banos Downtown Association, its businesses, and tourism in our area. We will begin by creating a virtual doorway website with fast, responsive performance and enhanced usability. And we will keep it on top of all search engine lists, such as Google, Yahoo, and Bing. We will ensure that online reviews and listings are accurate and expand the reach via social platforms, such as Facebook, Twitter, LinkedIn, and Google+. We will provide downtown events, local businesses, and tourism using videos, digital display, print ads, and social media to tell the stories and engage the audience. A few examples of local businesses and tourism include Woolgrowers, San Luis Reservoir, Tulie Elk Reserve, Wildlife Refuge, Malekka Museum, Paricio Brewery, and the Historic Canal Farm Inn. In addition to digital marketing, there currently are four digital, or four downtown speakers that the Downtown Association has purchased and maintains. They currently play music. The wireless public address system allows for more speakers with promotion announcements for upcoming events or to promote local merchant sales. It also has the capabilities of being a public address system for downtown events, such as the Christmas and Veterans Parades, and street fairs, just to name a few. We will publish a quarterly, full-color glossy magazine to feature downtown businesses and promote upcoming events, as well as tourism. We are also able to coordinate radio, television, and billboard opportunities as needed. So, as you can see, the Enterprise Media Services under the McClatchy Company really is a complete marketing agency, who just happens to own a few newspapers, such as the Enterprise and the Merced Sun Star. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. When I asked him to put a marketing plan together, we got a marketing plan. So, appreciate that very much. The next young lady that I'm going to introduce has been someone that I've met, because also, when I arrived here, found out that you do a farm, to fork, or farm-to-table, actually they call it here. And there is a group who comes together and works together and makes this happen. And I'm very excited about it this year, because they allowed me to be a part of their group. But the real workers are the teams that work together. And this lady, Donna Mendez, has been working on this for a long time. She is great at doing events, but she's got a team, which is, some of them are here. So, I don't want to not look at them, and that would be Joanne, and Sandy, and Penny, and Leah, is Leah here? And Leah. Those ladies are really working hard, so you must come to this event, because it's going to be a really great event. And the money is going to go to scholarships for our high school students, who will continue in ag, in ag education. And some of the money will also be going into the redevelopment fund for the downtown. So, at this time, I would like to introduce Donna.
I'm Donna Mendez. I'm a business owner for downtown. I've been a part of the Downtown Association since it began. It's been...
Five years? Joanne, five years?
Four or five years. I'm not exactly sure. I want to thank Sharon for asking me to help in this venture of the revitalization and beautification for the downtown. As the event planner, I'm in the process of forming the committee. A couple of people, like I said, it's not completely set in stone, because I've been really busy with the farm-to-table fundraiser that we're doing. But I'm working closely with Michelle from the Chamber, John Cates, Mona Giuliani, and I've approached the Arts Council. So, hopefully, we will have our team together for events for the upcoming year. It's our goal to create new events to raise funds for the project, and that will bring the community to our downtown. Currently, the Los Banos Chamber and the Los Banos, and the Downtown Association hold annual events. To name a few, the Chamber holds the street fair twice a year and hosts the Christmas parade. The Downtown Association puts on the wine stroll, a Christmas evening downtown, and the farm-to-table. This is our third year, and that's a really exciting event. Every year, it just seems to get better and better and grow. And so, hopefully, we will raise a lot of money this year for the project. We want to not only support these existing events, but grow and add new ones, so the citizens of Los Banos will enjoy our historical downtown and see it grow and thrive. So, we have some ideas about bringing more events downtown, some of them raising money as fundraisers, but also just putting on projects where people come downtown. There's a lot of people that, you know, don't even realize what a great downtown we have. I teach for the college, and the students come to my studio, because they don't have room at the college to run the class. I, I do a PE class, two PE classes. And so, every semester, the students come downtown, and they first have to email me, because they don't know where it is. And then, once they come downtown, they see, and I, I tell them all the great things that we have downtown, the drugstore, we have the bookstore, we have the shops, and, and it's, it's an eye-opener for them, but it's a very positive, you know, it's a positive thing that they're exposed to. So, we just need to get the word out. We also need to not just think about our businesses from within the downtown. We need to step outside and bring other businesses to help us out that aren't strictly downtown, but hold events, and also include them from, from Los Banos. So, if anyone has any ideas or comments, don't hesitate to contact me or the committee members or Sharon. My business is on the corner of J and Sixth. It's Positive Changes. So, with that, Sharon.
See, I'm telling you, we have a great group of people that are working together to make this happen. It's all about team. It's never about I. And they're really looking at pulling, just like Donna was saying, we really want it to be understood that the downtown is the center of a community, but it is a community as a whole. And we want it to be more of a destination area where people come, there are special things that they can do while they're here, a lot of entertainment, and Donna's going to be working on that. So, thank you. Also, I would, our last position as a chair, and he's working with some great people, again, I'm going to ask Taylor to come back to the podium, because Taylor, excuse me, Taylor is our chair for our finance group.
I, I have to tell you, before I jump into the financing real quick, myself, my family, we're very excited about what's happening here in Los Banos. It really seems like there has been some grassroots momentum that is really moving things forward. And it's exciting for us to see the potential of what could happen in downtown. And to be talking with Alex and working with him and the rest of the city councils, and that everyone's here and coming together at the same time, we're appreciative of it. And I didn't anticipate as much backing from the community that is coming together as well. It, it just seems like it's kind of the snowball effect, and it's going forward. So, thank you for that. We're excited. As far as the Funding Committee goes, myself, Tom Calgen, Dick Gerby, we are all a part of that, and we'll be handling the, you're going to hear a little bit about the continuing funding that's going on, but also, we're going to be handling what comes in from the various events and how to distribute the money, as well as taking a look, see if there's any grants that we can get ahold of to help with downtown. Let's see what have gone on the list here. Any private funding that can come in, some donations, perhaps, that sort of thing. So, I'll keep this one short. I mean, you know how funding works. We're going to try and manage it.
One of the most important parts of a revitalization project is sustainability. One way to assist with this is some of the property owners would like to consider forming a P-Bid. First, I want to make sure that everybody understands the difference between a bid and a P-Bid. A bid is an assessment on property owners and on businesses. A, I'm sorry, let me try this again. A P-Bid is an assessment on property owners, and a bid is on business. A bid is formed, a formed asset district, not unlike Landscape and Lighting Act of 1972. This is understand not to mean a government subdivision, but a fixed area. A bid is a program under the city that assesses businesses or properties, assesses business or properties to the general, to fund general for providing, which is normally done by nonprofits, services, or improvements. So, it can be done both through the city or a nonprofit on a bid. But simply put, a bid is something that you do with the business owners, not with property owners. A P-Bid, which is the acronym of a Property Business Improvement District, is what you do with the property owners. And that's what I want to talk just briefly about tonight. P-Bid is a specific area part of the Downtown Association, which is run under a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. This corridor of the downtown is the area that property owners assess themselves and an annual levy assessment that is used to finance all activities set forth in management, in a management plan development for the downtown area, and is developed by the property owners. The Board of Directors has their own bylaws. They are fiscally accountable for the budget and operational responsibilities for the overall planning, implementation, and management of the operation. The P-Bid does oversee the whole project, the owners, and they have an employee who oversees the day-to-day operations and services in response to the board. The assessment is run by the property owners, and they have to follow the Brown, the Ralph M. Brown Act and the California Public Record Act. The board meetings are open, just like council meetings are, to the public, and usually once a month. But if they want to have an extra meeting, they can do it, just like you, a special meeting, but it has to be posted and follow the Brown Act. The assessment will appear as a separate line of item on the annual property tax bills, which are prepared by Merced County. Assessments will be calculated based on the most recently available property data, to ensure that the data is accurate. It has been discussed to keep this as a usual, usable square footage. So, in talking to the property owners on how they would like to do this, if you had a building and you're not using the upper floor, because it's not usable, or if it had a space that you're not using, they, they don't want to assess that space. They only want to assess the space that's being used. But if that should change, if they fix it or, or do something else, then they have to come back for a new assessment, and that's added to their assessment. Bonds would not be used to finance any improvements or activities for this downtown revitalization project. The map shows suggested boundaries, and I think you have a map possibly in front of you, but it's right here. And it goes from K to H, up to Fifth, and over to Seventh, is where the boundaries would be. And I really need to explain this. The P-Bid would fit within the Downtown Association, and is part of the Downtown Association. It just happens to be a separate entity where they assess themselves, and they have a special area. So, that's why they have separate boards than what the Downtown Association would have. They have their own board. The P-Bid has a board. Downtown's running as a nonprofit, even though the P-Bid... Even though the P-Bid is under a 501(c)(3), it would be run under the Brown Act. As of right now, we have a list of 62 properties that would be within those boundaries. This information would also be a component of the engineer's report. Footage assessments, this discussion with property owners have been usable, which we just talked about. The management plan, which basically is the budget provided, including admin and operations, maintenance, events, and promotions, marketing, and branding. We need to set timelines that must be met for the project. Copies of the petition and how it works, engineer reports, first letters to the property owners for informal, just to get a feel to where everybody is. The final petitions, and you have a lot of meetings prior to that that are public meetings. Then you have a final vote, council resolution, and it's a 50% to pass the vote. We say 50 plus one because you have to have at least 50. Benefits of a P-Bid are for capital improvements of streetscapes and maintenance, job creation, business attraction, business retention, economic growth, and new investments. The next steps is to come is the revitalization project, which includes continued development and vision and design, working with the city on efforts for future public and private investments in the downtown, working with the city to identify, prioritize vacant buildings that are appropriate for new business investments, continue with the facade program, and to move forward with the development of the P-Bid. Stacy, I understand also that you have some guests here tonight that are going to talk a little bit about your strategic plan. Could you come forward?
Sure. Thanks, Sharon. So we felt this was a good opportunity to, as we're updating the council on the revitalization plan, to also talk about the city's general plan update. And a component of the general plan is a downtown strategic plan. It's an actual action item that we provided and built in within our general plan update. So we have staff here from Place Works. They're going to be talking about the strategies and the ideas that we're going to be putting in and implementing within the general plan as a part of our strategic plan to create a vibrant mixed-use downtown that is the pride of our community. That was really the focal point within the general plan. So with that, I'm going to introduce Bruce Brubaker from Place Works.
Hi there. It's a pleasure to be here. And this is Sharon's show tonight, so I'm just a parentheses in the show. And I'll only be a minute. But I'm with Place Works. I'm an associate principal, and I'm an urban designer, and I have experience working on downtown plans throughout the state. We've done downtown plans for Livermore, Santa Rosa, Redding, Upland, Gilroy. And it's an exciting time here because, in this case, there's already a lot of groundwork laid with the business owners and the property owners, and momentum is gaining there. And we don't have to do that work. It's already underway. The downtown strategic plan, though, can actually help the business owners, property owners, and the community decide about other issues and facades and financing of private development. We can look at things such as landscape architecture and aesthetic improvements. We can look at wayfinding and signage, parking issues, and even zoning and development standards for the empty lots in the downtown. So those are some of the things that we can look at as part of our downtown strategic plan as we move forward. And then that will move into the general plan. So it's an exciting time. We're happy to be here. I did want to mention that we are proposing to do a community meeting, a citywide community meeting focused on the downtown. So this will be part of the general plan effort and the downtown strategic plan effort. And we hope to get a lot of input from the broader community about what the vision is for downtown. And with that, I'll hand it back to Stacy.
Sure. We'll have Sharon come back up. Thank you. When I had an opportunity to talk, I got very excited for all of you because this is really a great time for Los Banos. And I just see such great things in the future. And already, everybody is coming together, and that's what makes something move. And I'm going to talk a little bit about that in a minute. But I have somebody else that I would like to bring forward. This person has been a great support for me personally and for the projects from day one, when I made the first phone calls to everybody, to all the property owners and all the people I could talk to about the first meeting we had. And that's Tom Calgen. Tom is Los Banos. I mean, everything about him is, from the time he was born, raised, everything here. And every time I get a little bit kind of like, hmm, let's see, we need to do this. Tom will say, it's going to be good. It's going to be good. You know, he just keeps pushing me along. So I'd like him to come forward and just speak a little bit to the process that we've been doing in the project because he's been a tremendous support as well.
Good evening, council and staff. Just want to say how excited I am about what's going on. The Hostettler Grant is going to really get this thing off to a roaring start. Having Sharon Silva here is something we've needed for a long time. I look back at a study that myself and several other landowners downtown and the Chamber of Commerce put together a few years ago. And I looked at the study, and there's several cars on the front picture of this thing, a Forbes and Gas study, 1968. We've been at this for 50 years, trying to get something done downtown, and it's going to happen, and I'm excited about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. He really is. Like I said, you know, you have those cheerleaders. I have a lot of them around me, and now I just get excited even thinking about all of it. So, and one of those cheerleaders is someone that... Actually, I had to remind him that we knew each other when we were kids. That was only a year or two ago. Unlike him, I don't have birthdays anymore. We just have anniversaries. But he has been a foundation of this community since I was in my twenties, and that was yesterday. So it was exciting to me when Greg stepped forward and said that he wanted to help. And I happened to have had the privilege to know his wife as well, and she was a wonderful woman. So it was really, it's really special to have him working with us and to be a part of this. But earlier this evening, I was sharing with you some of the projects that he's already doing, like the facade program because of him. We're able to move forward with this. He recognizes how important the community is. He gives so many things to not just this community. But I did some interim CEO work for Merced after I retired. Spent a year over there with their chamber, doing some stuff for them. And Greg was all over Merced, but his heart has always been here in Los Banos. I know that. So I want to recognize that he's a property owner. Private funding would be a supporter of a major of this project. He is a great pillar of this community. And he's here tonight to talk about his vision and support of the downtown. So I would like to invite Greg to the podium.
Thank you. Before I get started, you're too deep. I want to talk about Mayor Protem. I guess it's Mayor Protem, yeah. It looks like Acting Mayor right now to me. But I was honored to be part of Mayor London-Bree from San Francisco's inauguration on the 11th day of July, the second female mayor of San Francisco. As a matter of fact, African-American. And Mayor Brown invited me. I had a relationship with Mayor Brown for some years, but there were some honorable people there, like Joe Kochet, Doris Fisher, Lois Haas, Jeffrey Heller, Nancy Bechtel. And I will tell you, it would be an honor someday to see you maybe sitting in the mayor's chair as mayor. I've known you for some years, and when you were on the Plan A Commission, and you gave a substantial direction a number of years ago in decorative crosswalks and street lighting and enhancing the neighborhoods, which was enlightening, and that was some time ago, which was a learning experience for our community and for the wholesaler companies. So I want to thank you for that. I made my notes on London-Bree's program tonight, which is rather fitting. And I want to thank my wife, Catherine Hostettler, and Andrea and Ron Brandt. Andrea, when I got married to my wife back in the '70s, I got a package and a three-year-old daughter Andrea, and she's been a great woman. And her office is downtown, just a block off Main Street. And the community and, I guess I'd say, potentially myself a little bit, was blessed because the year that Catherine Hostettler passed away, she passed away in 2010, with some other notable people passed away, notably the owner of the New York Yankees. And the benefit to that was that no inheritance tax was payable that year. So that leaves additional monies within the estate to be spent or invested in the community. And it was Kathy's wish that if we would get through the housing event and the, what we call, economic downturn of those years, that we would invest and give things back to the community because the community had been very good to the wholesaler company, specifically to the wife and I and Andrea and Ron Brandt. So as you may know, a number of years ago, we pledged a million dollars to Los Banos May Day Fair or the Spring Fair, whatever it's called today, because Ron Brandt was Kathy's son-in-law, and my son-in-law married Andrea. And that was part of her wish to give back to the May Day Fair because her son-in-law was a manager there for, I think, almost 18 years, still is. And with that, she had other desires, and we talked about this a little bit over the years. In 1953, I rode one of the May Day Fair parades floats through here is the tomahawk for the Chauchoa Fair. I was their representative. As I can remember, the only store I remember was the Corner Drugstore and Mastrangelo's, but at five years old. So, I mean, it must have been '73, as a matter of fact, now that I think about it. But I did my math earlier, does it? But also, this was, this pledge of a million dollars to the downtown rehabilitation program was actually inspired by Mayor Valalta and Superintendent-elect Silveira and Gene Lieb and City Manager Alex. Alex, since he's got here, has been quite passionate about downtown. And part of what my wife's desires were and are and always have been is giving back to the community. And she started doing that a long time ago when we got married at the May Day Fair buying animals. And then from that, she liked giving away turkeys. She started out on the highway with, in the back of a pickup, with like about 20 turkeys. People, she put us on free turkeys. And then the next year, she thought that was so much fun that she bought more. And now that's developed in the last, I don't know, 35 years into more than 20, substantially more than that. But Sharon was in our community a number of years ago and admired what she'd done in Turlock. And as a matter of fact, I was there today for another meeting with Odell Engineering. And I looked at downtown. I've always admired what they did downtown, and I've agreed with what Sharon and City of Turlock have done over the years. We have been doing business in Turlock ourselves over there. We did the Walmart site work many years ago there. But it's always admiration how they did their downtown. So that combination of all the people involved there in that community inspired Sharon and what she's done there. And I think that carryover to this community is going to be wonderful. And this community has been, as I said earlier, I think, been very good to the wholesaler companies. And my wife was proud to have moved here, immigrated here from Seattle back in, well, we'll say before 1973. I got married in '73. So she was really happy with this community. And that's what really inspired that because she wanted a substantial portion of her interest in the wholesaler companies, if they survived the downturn, to be invested in the community here. So this is an excellent opportunity to do what she wants done. And one of the other reasons is they don't make a cash flow big enough for me to take it with me, so I just will invest it here. So I think that's all I need to talk about that is, one of the good things about this also is that you've got longtime stakeholders in your community who have an interest in downtown. And I think it's the right thing that to... Most of our money that we generate doesn't come from the downtown. It comes from the outer parts of town. And this benefits, helping rebuild the downtown helps out the whole community. And it's the right thing for the money outside to go back into the downtown. And this is a great community. And with the upgrading of the community, and I don't think this will be the last time that you will probably end up seeing us down here with donation. But we're going to leave it at where it is for today, given where the market goes, and which we're also lucky through the downturn because we're sizable almond grower and potato growers, which helped us get through the downturn of not building homes for nine years. And now we're back in a position where we're building substantial homes within Merced County, not only just in Los Banos, but in Merced. As you know, we have our office here. We also have one in Merced. And part of the benefit of that, as I talked about earlier in the evening, is about most of our paychecks are counted, cashed in Merced County. And we buy a substantial portion of our equipment and pickups and vehicles and invest it back in this county and this community. So I think with this, the perception when people come to town, they really like this town, visiting. And I also have a sizable investment in the community called Winners, California. And people from Davis, Vacaville, and all over go visit there because it is, it's like Los Banos, but smaller. But they've done a lot of things like we're going to do here. So I've seen what they do in Turlock, what they do in Winters, and how nice it is. And they have restaurants down there in Winters and Turlock. So I think, I see a lot of upside to this. And as my wife would tell me that, you know, Greg, giving is living, and it's the right thing to give back to the community, especially where the money is actually generated, put it back in this community. So I want to thank all of you for everything you've done and the effort to spark this because without the leadership to design and build this, the money's not going to get to the kind of use, I should say, it's going to get put to the right use, bricks and mortar, and we're going to see a difference in our community and what the stakeholders have wanted to do. And I think it's the right thing to do. It's responsible. It's a responsible thing to do. We try to invest our community back within this county all that we can. We don't buy shopping centers in Scottsdale and invest the community outside. We try to put it back in this community and in this county. And it's part of what I think the responsibility would be of a business that has made their money here to invest it back here. So, thank you.
Can I get a picture of you guys?
I almost forgot about the money.
Oh, I didn't. It's okay, thank you.
My old boss Carla, the restaurant where my wife and it... Did you ever work there, Sharon?
That's right, I was your cocktail waitress.
Carla always said, "Get the money." Okay? So I'm going to get the money right here for you, so I don't get out of here without it, because I might forget to give it to you. But I'll leave you the whole check.
And then get a check to the downtown and the council.
You want me to go stage left or right?
Absolutely, of course. Um, you know, your hair looks great.
Sharon, can we get one more?
Sure.
I brought an iPhone.
Yes.
Why don't you tell us your password?
Password is Alex.
I know I'm a little slow on the tech part, but I can almost run this off. Let me do one more.
You want to get up? Do you think Sharon should be? I'll just take one, Sharon. Okay. You guys are looking good. Perfect. Thank you.
And we may be back.
Here, wait a minute, wait a minute. Greg, I have a phone.
Thank you.
I have your phone.
Sharon, can you mind having a quick picture of us? You want to do a selfie? We used to work together, like, 10 years ago?
Yeah, 10 years ago.
We didn't have selfies, huh?
Again, thank you so much. Well, what a great start. Having people like this in your community is what makes Los Banos who and what it is. And you've got a few of those people, well, you've got several of those people in this audience. And that's why I know that this project's going to be a success. But I want to talk just one quick minute, and I'll wrap it up real quick here. Partnerships are very important when doing any type of a project, but specifically when you're doing a downtown revitalization project. In fact, it's impossible to do without the support of the Downtown Association, which is the 501(c)(3) and the city, along with the stakeholders, such as the property owners, the business owners, the community members, the community organizations. It does literally take everyone to make a community work. It would be impossible to meet the revitalization needs without the Downtown Association, which provides the 501(c)(3) nonprofit agency, which is called for on different funding opportunities. We can get grants and those type of things through a nonprofit, such as the bid under an AB 201618. It is very important to have the members, the property. I'm so excited about the check, I'm kind of, let's see, and the property. I want to make sure I have this.
Excuse me, Mr. Hostettler, don't leave.
Yeah. Let's see, where am I? And without the property owners, as part of the team to keep the project's vision moving forward, the property owners will be paying a majority of the project, the city, we couldn't do it without the city. There is no way this could ever be done without the city. It takes a full partnership here. The city levies the assessment, provides the assistance with the process, such as the engineers, formal votes, public hearings, resolutions, just to name a few. Everything is working as a partner with the city to make this happen, to get a P-bid. So, and it takes the downtown to run it through the nonprofits, it just takes everyone to work together. So as you can see, the city is a major player. This project only will be successful as partners. We can make this happen in the Los Banos community as a whole. In conclusion, I want to thank all of you for your time and support and for allowing us to present our summer to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Silva. And I want to thank your committee, Mr. Wilson, Mrs. Valalta, Mr. Leib, and Mrs. Mendez, for all the work that you've done in working on the committees. And a special thanks to Mr. Hostettler for his generosity to help fuel this downtown revitalization. Back in the late 90s and the early 2000s, when I was first on the Planning Commission, there was talk about revitalizing downtown Los Banos at that time, and it just never happened. But I always kept that vision in my heart, because in my travels with my job, I had the opportunity to visit other communities throughout California that had towns that were similar in population size of Los Banos. Economic differences may have been there, but I never let that vision get in my way about what our, our town was as far as economics was concerned versus some other city. And I'm not always a person that may come up with the idea, but, and I love stealing ideas from other people.
Me too.
But with that, as a planning commissioner, I, I hope that I brought new fuel, new ideas to our community to help bolster and bring us to another level. And as a city council member, I have that same vision, and I'm really excited about what's going to happen with our downtown. It won't happen overnight, but it will happen. And that's the thing that we all have to look forward to. And just to thank everyone, again, Mr. Leib for bringing Mrs. Silva here, and for all the business owners who volunteered to help move this forward and get this in, in a direction that we need to go, I'm just overly joyed and overexcited to know that our community is going to be a destination point at some time where people are going to want to come. And the locals who live here will eventually figure out what our downtown is going to offer. Having come from Morgan Hill to this city, I saw how Morgan Hill grew and all the different opportunities that they offer people as far as entertainment, as far as restaurants, and they're still growing. So we still have a lot of room for growth, even with this planning. This is not where it's going to stop. This is only the beginning. And again, thank you to everyone. And thank you, Mr. Hostettler, for the comments. I did help, when I was sitting on the Merced County Fair Board, pass out turkeys over there as well as here in Los Banos. So it, it's just a joy to know that you have a business person in your community who will give back. And thank you, you know, for your wife's vision and her giving, and that you still carry that forward as her wish. You're still operating in that, in that realm, and I thank you for that. So I'd like to ask any other council members if...
May I just say one thing?
Yes.
One that I don't want to be remiss from saying. I will tell you, I was working with your city manager as well through this process. He has really been a support, and I think you're very lucky to have him, and I look forward to working more with you, Alex. And I think we have the same visions as we sit and talk, and I think it's going to be a great partnership and relationship for this, and I agree. And I do want to say one last thing. You've got a great team here, there, so exciting to talk to. I was so excited, I was like, whoa, okay. So, thank you very much.
And also, I'd like to give a lot of thanks to Stacy.
Well, Stacy, I can't even...
Who put in a lot of time.
Not only time, Stacy has been my left, my right hand, my left foot, my right foot. Wouldn't have been able to do anything without her. And you know, thank you for saying that, because I've meant to say that five different times tonight, and I've been so busy on, on everything. Sometimes we take the very people who are at the heart of everything for granted, and she is such a quiet person, steps back, does whatever is needed. But without her, it wouldn't have happened for us. So, thank you.
And with that, are there any other council members that would like to make any comments this evening?
Stacy, I turn it back over to you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation, Sharon.
Stacy, before, before you go, I want to get any comments from other council, then I'll turn it back over to you.
Absolutely.
Okay. Let's see. Tom, did you push a button?
I pushed it.
Oh, I see, let me see. Is it on?
Now we're on, thank you. I've been, we've been talking about this for many years, ideas. Los Banos is a unique place in California. We have a wonderful historical nature that our downtown brings to life. Tom Calgian and I have had numerous conversations over the potential of the downtown. And now it looks like we finally have the, the energy and that all-important money, because everything costs. And the fact that Mr. Hostettler and memory of Mrs. Hostettler, we thank you for your generosity here, and we thank all the, the building owners and the business owners downtown for coming together to make this happen. Los Banos has so much potential, and getting that downtown alive and vibrant in, in, in this, in this way, I think is very exciting. On, you mentioned a couple of entertainment things, our Arts Center. I noticed that the Arts Center...
They're a part of.
Okay, I noticed their center is not part of the block of the 53 buildings.
They're not in the P-bid boundary.
They're not in the P-bid building, but they are in the downtown area. But we've asked them to join on the teams.
Absolutely, and I'd like to see if we look, planning our development, pathways, lighting, whatnot, connecting the downtown to the Arts Center, and also if there's ever a potential of revitalizing the Crest Theater into an entertainment.
We're working on that.
You know, that, that place would look magnificent with the old neon back on it. And so, Grand Theater, I'm from Tracy originally.
Yeah.
So I, I, I know about downtown.
I remember the Grand Theater.
Yeah, and the Grand Theater now is, is...
It's beautiful.
Yeah, center of the world up there.
Center of it, yes.
We're very pleased, and I don't want to take up too much time, but I do want to express my gratitude, appreciation for all the hard work and all the generosity. Taylor coming over, we've talked many times, a few times years ago when I first got elected about these ideas, and we've all been generating, Donna and everyone, and we've talked about this, and it's just a matter of, now it's gelling, and the dream coming true will be very, very exciting to see. Thank you.
The time is right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fariah.
I can't shut it off.
This is Johnson Santos.
Thank you very much. I just want to keep it very short, but thank you to everyone. This looks like it's going to be a wonderful, wonderful idea, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, if not, I'll turn it back over to Stacy.
All right, so, well, I want to start off by thanking Sharon for the presentation and everyone that came to show support for the downtown, the business owners, property owners. A very exciting time, there's a lot of energy happening right now, and it's perfect timing to be a part of a general plan update and to be working with this, this organic process with the property owners and the businesses. So with that, staff is looking for direction from the city council to move forward with the potential next steps. So Sharon had outlined for you in, in one of the previous slides, really those next steps, and she had broken down that P-bid process, but really the next step would be in seeing if there first is any interest from the majority of the property owners, the downtown property owners, to support the creation of a P-bid. Second, if, if we see that there's enough support or a majority interest, we would then obtain proposals from qualified consultants to help the city organize and create a P-bid for downtown, which would be a property-based improvement district. We would obtain proposals then from qualified engineers, and Sharon had talked about the engineers report, that's a part of the B-bid process. So that would be prepared and would be used as an attachment to the P-bid. And then the city staff would come back to the city council with an outlined process and cost to move forward with creating a downtown P-bid. At this point, I really don't have any costs, as we haven't gone out and solicited for any proposals for a consultant to help us organize the P-bid, or even for that engineers report, which is necessary to, to move forward. But right now, we're just seeking direction from the council to move forward with those next steps, those logical next steps, which first and foremost, we need to see if there's any interest, enough interest from the property owners downtown to continue with this process. Which, you know, this, this room does have a, a good, good chunk of property owners here, and, and we do feel that there's, there is support, as this has come up organically from the property owners. So I'll conclude with that.
Okay. So Stacy, if you can help me here, I know on the agenda it says that you want direction from the city council on how to proceed, is with what you've given us, is, are we just going to give you directions via vote on what you've explained thus far?
Yes, it would be to start the process of, of a P-bid, seeking interest, and then if there's enough interest, moving forward with a process.
Okay, and, and that would be based on the downtown business owners coming back to you, saying that they want to move forward with this?
Yes, we would ask, we would create, so based on direction tonight, we'd create an informal letter and send that out to all the property owners to, as an informal survey to, to see where the property owners stand.
All right, with that in mind, as Stacy's indicated, they're looking for, the staff is looking for direction from the council on starting the process of a P-bid for the downtown businesses. And so I'm asking for a council member to make a recommendation for that. So, let's see. I'm trying to figure out who's first here, I'm sorry. So Alex. Okay, okay, so we have Mrs. Sanchez, do you have a recommendation? I'm, I'm sorry, Mrs. Santos.
No worries. Don't worry. I'd like to make a recommendation to go forward with the P-bid, as stated, as Stacy is planning director.
Okay, so we have the recommendation by council member Johnson Santos, do we have a second? Council member Severa?
Can I get your button?
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So moved. Okay.
Can we take five minutes?
Sure, we'll take a five-minute break.
Thank you.
All right. Well, the attorney and I ordered a pizza. Where are you? Yeah. Yeah. Okay. All right. Let's get down to our favorite subject here. Item number eight, marijuana regulation ordinance update. And we're going to our community and economic development director, Mrs. Elms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council. So, I will keep this update pretty brief, but as you can recall, back in January of 2017, the city council adopted an ordinance for the regulation of medical and non-medical marijuana activities. Essentially, the ordinance specifically prohibits all commercial marijuana activity, marijuana dispensaries, marijuana processing, delivery, outdoor cultivation, and it regulates the indoor cultivation for personal use. It allows up to six plants to be grown only indoors and that is in conformance with state law. Back at that meeting in January, the city council asked, and gave actually staff direction, to come back with information regarding our new ordinance and the regulation, the registration process in 18 months. And the reason for that, staff asked for 18 months, is that the state of California was going to be ready to issue commercial licenses January of 2018. So, we wanted to give ourselves a little bit of time to be able to see what was happening with the cities around us and what was happening with the state of California. So, that time has passed and we're a little over 18 months now in the process. And staff at this point is not recommending any changes to our current ordinance at this time. There is not enough empirical data to support a benefit to the city of Los Bannas to legalize commercial sale of marijuana. Within your staff report, I do provide an overview of what's happening in Merced County and the cities within Merced County, what they are doing with marijuana, whether they're regulating with a prohibition or whether they're allowing commercial uses. And the most advanced community within Merced County is actually the city of Merced. As you may recall, in June, they passed, their voters passed, a 10% of gross receipts sales tax for cannabis sales. They also require a tax on businesses of $25 per square foot of cultivation space. So, their process requires a $25 per square foot or 10% of gross receipts, whichever is greater. They are far ahead in terms of the other cities as they are already accepting permit applications for dispensaries. I spoke to their city manager today to get an update. They do have four applications that are moving forward to their planning commission at the end of this month, as well as 10 non-dispensary applications. Then, the city of Outwater, as a way to get out of their general fund deficit, they too are proposing to allow commercial sales of marijuana, but they are capping their maximum at two. The city of Livingston is not allowing dispensaries, but is allowing the commercial aspect in terms of manufacturing, testing, indoor cultivation, distribution, and medical cannabis. City of Dos Palos is at the same regulations as us, which is complete prohibition. And then, the city of Augustine also has a prohibition, but is having town halls right now to consider possibly revising their ordinance. So, that's a general update on what's happening around us, but based on that data and that the city of Merced, which is far ahead of all of the other communities, hasn't issued any permits as of yet to any commercial businesses. There isn't enough data to be able to support or that shows that there's a benefit, that there's any revenue that's being generated or what the social aspects are to legalizing commercial marijuana. So, what staff is suggesting is that we would bring this item back, that the council would give staff direction to bring this item back in about a year. Our registry process is working actually fairly well. As you can recall, back in January, the idea of that was just to be educational. We weren't seeking any information, personal information, from any of the folks that were registering. And thus far, we've had 72 people register. What happens is that I receive and only myself receives an email once a registry is submitted on the city's website. There is no data. All it is, is essentially date stamped, that it's been submitted, date stamped with the time. So, I don't know who it is, but in order to validate that registration, they have to fill out the rest of the form. And one of our conditions of approval is that if asked upon law enforcement, they must provide that registry. So, it seems to be working because the purpose of all of that was for education. 72 registries is 72 more than, you know, that we're grateful to have, just to be able to have the opportunity to educate folks as they are having indoor cultivation in their own homes and for the safety of that. So, with that, that concludes my update. And I would ask that the city council would provide direction for staff to come back in a year, so that we would come back in August, September of 2019.
Chiefs, have we ever visited, both chiefs, has there ever been an occasion where you've walked into a home and there were plants growing and they didn't have a certificate? Has that ever happened? Oh, you can just turn your bike on. There you go.
Prior to this registration, we would enter homes quite, we have had many opportunities, many chances, many times where we were going to a home where there was a grow and whether it was being done illegally and dealing with electrical hazards that are being recommended, being taught to the people that are registering. But since the registering, I haven't and I personally have not seen and have not heard much from the crews of going into very, very many large grows. Every once in a while, you'll see, they'll go into one where there'd be one or two plants, but I don't believe there's been any issues in regards regarding the certificate or asked for a recertification. I haven't even had my, instructed my personnel to ask for it. That would be more directed towards the police officers if there was a situation where we thought something was being done illegally.
Okay. Chief, if you, you should be able to turn that on. Yes.
Yeah, I got you. You know, looking back, I think our biggest complaint since we have started this registration process has been more about either outdoor grows or the odor emanating from a home regarding the smoking of marijuana, but really, the officers going out and locating the large-scale grows that we used to locate, we're just not seeing them as often as we did. So, I think it's actually been working to a reasonable degree.
Okay. And you two are happy with the current ordinance?
Oh, yes. Yes. I don't, I do not, I would not suggest that we would make any changes at this point. I read an article the other day from Newsweek magazine that said that California had estimated that for the first six months of this process, they had actually gained somewhere in the range of more than $35 million less revenue than they had originally anticipated. So, they're not seeing the dollars come in at the pace and rate that they thought they were going to. So, I don't suggest we make any changes at this point.
Okay. Mr. Silvera?
Yes, chief. So, when we originally talked about this ordinance, one of your determining factors as to why you were opposed for any commercial activities is the increased criminal element that would come along with it. And that was one thing that I was, I was one of the folks that asked that we bring it back, you know, after a year, when we've kind of had it under our belt to look at and the issues. And so, I guess my question just directly is, is have you seen the measurable increase in criminal activity that you were expecting?
Can you say that question again? I'm not sure I follow.
So, you had cited that other places, Colorado specifically, you had cited some cases over there that there was an increased element of crime that came along with the legalization of marijuana and was one of your determining factors is, probably many, but one was the increased criminal element would be a reason why you wouldn't support any commercial aspects of, you know, in our city. And so, what I'm asking is, have you, has that, have you seen that? Have you seen the increased criminal activity that you were expecting?
So, we have not in Los Bannas, I think, because we've been as proactive as we have been in our prohibition of marijuana. But I can tell you that I don't have any citations tonight, but I can tell you that I see time and time again where homes and locations are the victim of violent crime and people are victimized by crime as a result of their growing marijuana, either at a business or their home. I can't give you any solid numbers now, but in Los Bannas, we have not because I think we've been as strict on it as we have. Does that answer your question?
Yes. Yes, it does. And so, I just, you know, I see that, you know, the slow-go approach and kind of waiting for other cities to kind of maybe vet out all the details and find out what works and what doesn't work. And I appreciate that approach. I still just, part of, you know, I don't know what the dollars are going to end up being, but after reading that whole law from front to back, one of the things that still sticks out in my mind is the fact that if you ban all commercial aspects of it, you have, you're not eligible for any of the grant funding that, that there's dollars that when it gets broken, the tax dollars get broken down, there's dollars that'll be made available to law enforcement through grants to help fight those, that extra criminal element, if you will. But when you ban all commercial aspects of it, you've taken away your ability to get any of that grant funding. So, that's one thing that I, so I appreciate the approach of just kind of taking it slow, but still willing to look at it. The other thing is, as I've been doing some research on this issue and talking to some folks, right now, on a daily basis, within the city limits of Los Bannas, there's an app that you can get on and they're delivering and there's delivery services that are delivering right now in the city of Los Bannas, multiple ones. I visited a dispensary in Crow's Landing. I was invited there by the owners, just to kind of go show me, like, you know, how secure their facilities, things like that. And they showed me on an app, like, right now in Los Bannas. And I mean, it's a menu. They, you pull up the person, it shows you, I think it's called like Weed Tracker or whatever it's called. And you pull up the, it shows you the different companies that are dispensing in Los Bannas right now. And you hit the deal and a menu pops down and you can, whatever they offer. And so, and they were saying that there's some rules that the state is trying to pass that's making it basically legal for them to do that, when we've banned all commercial aspects. And so, what it goes back to me is, if it's taking place here already, we're losing out on the taxes because they are being charged sales tax on it. Now, how they track that, where it gets paid, I'm not quite sure, but they're being charged sales tax on those purchases. And I'm guessing that's going back to whatever community that they're... their headquarters is out of, right? And so it's just, when we talk about always looking for, I guess, reliable revenue streams or funding sources, it's, if it's, if it's already taking place, I would hate to just pass it up, and, and, and not get our share of it. You know, and it's, and it's, and I, again, I've had this discussion with a lot of folks, constituents of mine, people that have been supportive, that have supported me over the years, that are just absolutely opposed to marijuana, period. And there's, there's that discussion to be had, but, but ultimately, you know, the residents of the state of California have passed the Adult Use of Marijuana Act. And so we have to be willing to embrace that, and I just, I, I, you know, and I still remember the gal that came here and uses it for medical purposes, and she doesn't want to grow it in her home, because she doesn't want to expose her kids to that, but she uses it as a form of medicine, and she's being forced to, you know, go out of town. And when she, when she goes out of town to buy her medicine, she's leaving her dollars in another community. And we're, we're always trying to look at ways to keep our dollars local, it's just something that we need to consider, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with the staff report that we need to wait and see how this goes. The chief has given us his opinion. I don't think we have to look too far out of the valley here. Just look over in Fresno and see what's going on there with illegal dispensaries popping up, and there's no way, you know, they're, they're having difficulty controlling these dispensaries that are popping up. Whether the state of California legalizes organizations to drive within a city and deliver marijuana, it's like everything else, we, we can't control that. But we do have some things within our control at this point. And if the chief has indicated to us that his department has been minimally impacted, if at all, with this law change, and what we have set up as far as what this city wants to do as far as not having dispensaries and such in Los Banos, I, I don't know what the value of the dollars that we would get by allowing this in our community, coming in from the state of California to offset this, to quote-unquote "help people with drug problems." And it's an oxymoron, as far as I'm concerned, by the state of California to say, "We're legalizing this, but we'll give you tax, we'll give you tax dollars if you allow dispensaries in your community to help people with drug problems or to fight crime." So, you know, that, that's my opinion. I want to stick to where we are right now. I don't want to open up Pandora's Box anymore. We have to wait to see what's going to happen in the state, and they're still trying to make decisions at this point on things that they want to allow in regards to furthering people to have marijuana in, in the state of California and in local communities. And, you know, I understand some people who don't want to grow it around their children, but that's their option. And, you know, people who have spoken to me have asked me that, and I said, "Look, you have the option of having," what is it, six plants, chief? "You can grow six plants in your home and have your own marijuana and not pay anyone a penny to do it." So it, it just, you know, I, I don't see the benefit in this of impacting our police department to have to fight more crime, because we can get a few more tax dollars for it." And that's just my opinion on it. So I, I needed to make that known, and I'll stick by it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Santos.
Thank you. Stacy, you said that Merced has not licensed anyone yet, but they have four, I guess, in the books. Has Outwater licensed anyone yet?
No, they're...
They're much further behind. They have not gone to the voters yet regarding the sales tax percentage. So they haven't, I know that on their website, they have information on how to apply, but as far as where everybody else is in the county, Merced by far is the furthest. They've, they've had their ordinance out the longest, they're already accepting applications, they have their process down.
Okay, thank you. As for me, I, you stated that it would be coming back, and I would love to see it come back in a year, and see as to where we, where the cities are at that are possibly licensing, and just see where they're at, to see if Los Banos could put some type, if we were, to the discretion of the council, of course, to go into a situation where we might possibly offering. If, I would like to see it back with some type of cap, if that were the case, or some option with caps. So, I mean, I'm definitely down for waiting a year and just seeing where we're at again, because I understand as of right now, since the licensing hasn't officially come out until January 2018, that we, I could understand where we wouldn't have enough information, and I guess, you may know what I'm saying, opening Pandora's Box. So yes, I would like to see it come back in a year with information, and I guess possible options as to what it would look like if we were to have Los Banos with a definite cap on it.
Sure.
Please.
Mr. Freya.
I agree with the police chief's recommendation and wait and see for a year. In the meantime, we continue to do research. It's, it's actually a more complex issue than something that can be decided one evening. And I think a year of analysis is be wise, and so that would be my recommendation. If anybody else wants to talk on it, if not, I'd go ahead and make that motion.
Well, just say one more thing.
Sure.
When this all got started, I, I suggested, and was very quickly told that they didn't like it, that to have one central distribution area throughout the county, where everyone would go for their, the marijuana that they needed, and then we'd all share in the profits by zip code. But that quickly got shot down, because everybody's greedy and they all want to make their own money. So, chief, but this thing, what worries me is this, this thing that Scott brought up about, about people trafficking it here in town, or driving it here. And I, I don't know what, what's bothering more, losing tax dollars, or, or someone going against our ordinance, and knowingly going against our ordinance, is there, what's your opinion on this?
Well, I think first, first and foremost, the idea of what all, all of you are saying about having to look at this again at some future point is, is completely reasonable. I say we're just walking down the road slowly, because we don't want to be the first ones to jump into this. More than, or in addition to the crime element that comes along with it, I'm equally concerned about the regulatory scheme that we're going to have to set up and establish and maintain to facilitate the process of these sales. That's why I'm hoping that a city somewhere close by us can go through the hardship of doing some of these things, and we take the best practice approach, and we implement our best, our, our best plan based on what we think is necessary. So, just so everyone understands, I think at the staff level, no one is outright saying we're not going to continue to pursue the idea. It's just, we, Merced's been working at this for years, and they still don't have any businesses, from what I understand.
They haven't issued yet.
And so you can just, you, you get the sense from that, that it's, it's a much bigger problem than, than what I think, we're on, we're on, you know, we're automatically just going to see these sales tax dollars skyrocket. If that were the case, I think we'd be all over it. So I, just to put everyone at ease, we are researching it, we look at it, we're willing to look at it again when the time is right. And when that balance comes out, where the staff and the gain that we're going to have, or that, that system that comes in where we can say, yeah, it works for all parties involved, yeah, we, I understand it's legal, we're trying to be, like we talked about, slow-walk it down the road, but it's a very tough issue that, quite frankly, I'll be very honest with you all, it's a, it's not on the high list of priorities for the things that we're attempting to accomplish with the city. I know how important code enforcement is to the council, it's important to me, it's important to staff. There are so, only so many hours in the day that we can do things, and so that's one of the things I want to focus on, is I want to be good at one or two things, and not be, maybe not as good at three or four or five things, because, you know, there, perhaps the, it might be a money issue, or we think it is. So I just want to, I want to see what other people are doing and how it works out best practice. So, does that answer the question?
No.
I'm sorry, I've got so many thoughts on this, it's, it's important.
The delivery things that...
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I totally forgot about that. Yeah, that's an issue that we, we know about, it's, it's in every community. When we have the resources to put towards it, we certainly do.
Okay, so I guess we're dealing with it, or we're going to...
Yeah.
Okay, okay. All right, so maybe we can, you know, some kind of have some kind of additional report later, and, and see what, you know, what's happening here, because I, I don't know, we set an ordinance forward, and, and if, if, if that's the case, and the council can make a decision to modify it, and say, do we get the tax dollars, or, or do we just let it go and let it fly under the radar? I mean, because it says no deliveries, right?
Yes, no deliveries, it's prohibited.
Yeah, so we're going to have to deal with the council, so.
Well, let us look into it, and we can certainly give you an answer back as to how prevalent it is.
Appreciate it, thank you.
I do want to clarify that the state law does allow the transportation through the city, so through Highway 152, for instance, or our local roads.
But not an endpoint.
But it does not allow the sale, that transfer point here in our community.
And I think one of the, one of the pieces of legislation that is being considered at the state level is that our ordinance that prohibits deliveries in our community would be, I guess, overruled, in an easy way of putting it, at the state level. Their, their rule would overrule ours, so I think there is that movement afoot to do that as well.
But right now, there is not?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Mr. Freya.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this conversation demonstrates the fact that we do need another year. It's very complex. Just the word marijuana itself is too broad a brush. It's a very complex issue, medicinal, recreational, various forms of marijuana, there, there are no particular agencies that control or guide or certify the potency of various marijuanaes as there are with alcohol and all the other drugs. I didn't want to go on tonight, but I'm going to, because it seems like the issue is conversational. So if you, if you followed any kind of drugs or narcotics, drugs, narcotics, medicines, you'll know that the medicines that are naturally produced are the most complex. I was once told that if aspirin were developed today, it would never pass the FDA, because they still don't know exactly how it works. Its origin is willow bark. Coca leaves, Coca leaves the source of cocaine, but Coca leaves are used to help give energy to the Inca warriors, and are also the, remember that benzocaine, novocaine, are cocaine derivatives, and so they have a benefit. But when you take, when, when, in the 19th century, when they learned to concentrate the elements from cocaine into a very powerful, of the Coca leaf into cocaine, then it became a very dangerous and toxic stimulant. And these natural, these natural drugs are complex. Let's not forget the conversation in the United States that brought prohibition about. It was, it was so powerful, a, a conversation, that it created a constitutional amendment, and it took another constitutional amendment to bring it into the prohibition. And, but what we ended up with after the prohibition was alcohol now, you'll notice, hard liquor has a tab on top, it has a label on top with a certification. If you don't know anything about moonshine, you know that bad moonshine will make you go blind. That's the old saying, probably make you sick in a lot of other ways. And so one of the, one of the challenges of marijuana as a drug, is it a medicine? Is recreational marijuana, there's always different versions, and then now, modern technology has learned to concentrate, concentrate it into honey oil, which is very potent and psychotropic. So I think now is the time for us to look at, and instead, just saying, instead of doing the big broad brush thing, and the money, we'll worry about the money down the road, but I think that looking at, at marijuana on its various levels, I think doing that and studying, like, the trafficking situation, the delivering, I think this year would be a good year to do it. And I think, Mr. Vaughn, am I correct? Yes, that it's still illegal at the federal level, is that correct?
Correct.
That's right. So let's not forget that marijuana is still an illegal drug, as far as the United States government is concerned. And so it's a very, very complex issue, and I know of its benefits, and I know of its detriments. And like all drugs, they all have benefits and detriments, side effects, addiction, whatever. Also, they have the use, the good use. And there needs to be, I think, some more, some more research and some more, some kind of stabilization. So if anybody's going to be buying medicinal marijuana, that they can trust that this medicinal marijuana has this percentage of THC, this percentage of other stuff, other various chemicals in it. And there's, you know, that, that's the way I'd like to see that go at the national and the state level. But in the meantime, we can look at the practicality of how we're dealing with it, and we haven't spent a lot of energy on it, as far as I can tell, but this conversation. I would like to see this come back in a year, and, and maybe we do, do some research in that year. So I would make the motion to bring this back in a year for consideration for the council in 2019.
Okay, I had a comment from Mr. Silveira.
Yeah, so, and, and listen, that's what I was hoping to drive the conversation tonight, is that at the beginning of this conversation, if I was reading it, everybody was just opposed to it, and we're just going to kick the can down the road a year from now, and then we'll revisit it then, but listening to Mr. Freya's comments, it's, I, we're at least, we're not just waiting for a year to have this discussion, we need to be having it now. And I, I mean, if we're doing this strictly because we think we're going to get rich on the deal, well, then we're doing it for the wrong reasons. But at the same time, you know, cities survive on two things, property tax and sales tax. And when we knowingly that it's, we have sales tax dollars that are being charged in, in our city limits, but we're not getting the benefit of them, and somebody else is, that bothers me. We hire a firm to look at all the sales tax revenues, to make sure that businesses are paying what they're supposed to be, you know, what they're supposed to be remitting to the city. And I don't know what the law is, chief, on, on the exact law number, but they, some way, there's some gray area within that, the current, where they can traffic it through your city, but it's like, what, their meeting point, they're allowed to take it out of the rig, if, if they met at Save Mart parking lot, is where they do, that's the gray area that they're living within. And then what I was told is that the state is basically, they're going to pass a law, they're working on passing a law that says that you can't, you can, you can have no, no distribution or delivery services in your community, but you can't stop them from going up and down the road, they can, they can, the state overrides it. So we need to be having the conversation, you need to be doing the research, so that, you know, because the presentation tonight was basically, yeah, you know, we got, you know, I'm not knocking your presentation, Stacy, but it's okay, this is what the other cities are doing, and, you know, we recommend that we're just going to go another year. There wasn't really a whole lot more thought put into it than that. I'm sure at a staff level, you guys did discuss a few things, but when it comes back, I obviously won't be here, but I, I would like to see staff give the council some ideas, and, and more so than just, yeah, we're going to see what everybody's doing for another year. Put a little bit more. So if there aren't any other comments, I will gladly second Mr. Freya's motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and I know what protocol calls for, but I, I, we need to understand that distribution. We need to understand it. So, Mr. Silveira, the comments you brought up tonight, if those are valid comments, chief, we need to understand what an endpoint is, as opposed to a drive-through. And, and if the law allows for a drive-through, and we're not getting our tax dollars, then we should be getting our tax dollars. And if the law doesn't allow for that, then we need to enforce that. And whatever it is, we passed an ordinance. And, and whatever it is, and if there's a flaw within the state of California, and we have to abide by it, that's one thing. But a point was brought up tonight, and we need to research that. So, because I don't want to lose any money either, to tell you the truth, so. So if we could, if we could find that out as to, yes?
So it is illegal. On page two of the ordinance, it breaks, of the staff report, it breaks down our existing ordinance, and delivery services are prohibited within our ordinance. Now, the state law has not changed, however, the state legislator, legislation is entertaining, possibly changing it, but as the... legislation is entertaining, possibly changing it, but as the state law stands right now, deliveries are prohibited. So, by all rights, the City of Los Banos Police Department does have the right to prohibit any deliveries within our community.
Can we check that endpoint versus waypoint, and to make sure that, you know, what we're on a solid ground, and, and, and research the tax issue a little bit?
Sure.
So, that, that's what I'm asking. Okay. You guys okay with that? Mr. Freya? Okay. All right, so we have a motion by Freya, as stated by Freya, to revisit in, in a year, and to
Research in the meantime.
Research in the meantime, including the, the waypoint things. And we have a second by Mr. Silveira. Are we good?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Thank you. Good conversation. Okay, let's go on to item nine, consideration of council member request regarding council member community outreach events, Johnson Santos. Mrs. Santos?
Thank you very much. So, I want to thank Alex and Chief Breezy for just readily being available to me when I, for this endeavor that I hope to pull off. My reason for bringing this possible community event up today was that, and I'm just going to go in my little spiel, I, I think everyone can remember a time when you felt a little, you felt as though there was a sense of community amongst your neighbors. And, I guess, and also, I mean, you can remember a time when you could probably leave your window open, and, you know, I'm not sure, you leave your window open, or you forgot to close your window at one point, and just feel okay, because you knew your neighbors kind of just had your back about these kind of things. And just now, you mean, social media and person, and even through personal experience, you hear things like car vandalism, you hear about strange solicitors coming up to your door, ask, trying to get information out of you. And my hopes are that, in the near future, is that I can, we can pull together. I originally started this because I wanted to create some type of event in my district, and, I mean, you have it rippled throughout the districts, but I was originally started with my district and mine, that I wanted to try to bring back some type of sense of community. So, in doing what I would hope to be a community-type event, I would bring as much as I can of the district together, and try to, and I think Chief Breezy phrased it pretty well one time, saying, bring a, bring a council meeting to the district. So, and I guess, with this council meeting, I mean, and mind you, everything's, nothing's set in stone, but I'm hoping, I'm sorry, I'm hoping the best outcome for this would be some type of neighborhood watch, where, where our residents are having that information readily available to that, you know, our wonderful police department, which they're doing a wonderful job, but it just to help them work more efficiently as well. And then at worst, or I guess, at worst, you're able to at least know who your neighbors are. Because there was a time when, you know, you knew who was down the street. You knew everyone. So, and mind you, I know this isn't something that's just gonna flash and happen, but I would just wanted to bring this, because I'm hoping to put on some type of event, and I wanted to bring this to council and staff, in hopes to expedite this event into fruition. So, I hope I explained it fairly well enough, but.
Would you be interested in, you know, and I'm, you were talking about bringing an event to your area. And how could we do this so each council member, I mean, if we could have some kind of list or something, how each council member could have an event in their area to, one time it's here, another time it's there, and, and so, so they could have, you know, equal access. That would be my only, only consideration, that, that everyone have the, the same access to a, an event where people could get to know each other, and, but, but we do something like that now, don't we, at, at different parts of the, the city? Chief?
We do, we do events. There's nothing on a schedule, or there's, there's not an event that goes on that we have time throughout the year, no. They're, they're on and again, off again.
Uh huh. Okay. So, what are you thinking, Mrs. Santos?
Well, um, my hope, and my original thought for this was gonna be fairly small, just to invite, not to make too big of a, I guess, essential deal of it, but to perhaps even go to a park, and, you know, with some assistance, mind you, to bring, essentially let the residents who aren't showing up at these meetings every week, or showing up at City Hall, actually trying to get the information, hopefully to bring that information to them. So, I, I know we've kind of, been kind of going back and forth on the scale of it, but at some point, and I'm hoping soon, that I can just get that information out there, so we, people know that it's out there, and aren't just hiding back like, oh, there's nothing we can do about that type of thing. And this was, in part, due to the fact that, for me, and mind you, I might be maybe just blowing this up a little bit, but for me, it seemed as though, for some time, there was like, calls. I mean, mind you, the police were doing their wonderful job, so please don't let anything I'm saying detract from that. But there was calls about just all kinds of vandalism, people's house being burglarized. I mean, I personally actually recently had my back window of my car broken, and it was just for fun. So, and just, this event was planned long before that incident happened to my car. It was being thought of long before that incident happened to my car, but it's just, this kind of helped me spur this along, because I want to see, I want to see, for me, I feel that, and it's might, might be the old way of thinking, that if you knew your neighbor, you'd feel as though, you know, oh, I left, because, for an instance, my sister, she left her garage open in her, at her house in Fresno. She knows each one of her neighbors. Someone called her, said, hey, your garage's open, I'll keep an eye on your house. I thought that was just a pretty nice way, and just something that just doesn't happen anymore. So, with that in mind, I thought, hey, how about, you know, like I said, at, at best, there's some type of neighborhood watch, like, you know, watch out, you know, some, you know, I saw somebody around here the other day, be careful. Or, at, you know, at, I guess, at the least, you can know who your neighbors are. So, sorry to peep myself, but.
No, no, you're not. Good idea. Alex, you have any ideas how we could work something out, and maybe bring it back later?
I mean, at, at the pleasure of the council, but I, I think based on, you know, previous conversations with the council member, some of the comments we're hearing tonight, I think, if you give us a little bit of time, we can come back to the full council with some options for district-based events, large-scale, small-scale, options in between. I don't know if the mayor would have any interest in a citywide event, so we could bring back some options related to the mayor. But again, based on the comments, I think we've got enough to go on, if the council wishes to proceed.
Yes.
Thank you. I'm glad you were able to bring this forward. And Alex, you know, I've talked to you about this before. And I, I was kind of conceiving it maybe just a little bit different, and that would be maybe, you know, to have a event in the park in your districts, because after this election in November, we'll all be in districts. And we need to be closer to the people that we represent. So, you know, I was thinking in terms of, you know, perhaps having our chief police and our, our department heads out, and just let them explain to the community what our function is, because most people don't even know what the city does, or what it has to offer the community. And, or where to go if they have an issue that they have concern about, as well as being able to bring the community together. For them to be able to know who represents them, so that they can contact that person with issues that, that they're concerned about. So, I, I think it's an excellent idea. And, and I'm glad you were able to bring this forward. And I think that, as, as council people, again, we need to get our boots on the ground, and get to know our community a little bit better, and find out what their concerns are, and if we can, or if it's something that we can't do, you know, that maybe we're prohibited from doing what they're asking us to do. But I, I think it's an excellent idea. I think it also gives us the, the opportunity to perhaps look at people who may want to be on commissions, to find new people, to put in, give input into our community. It, it's not, it's, it's a multifaceted thing to have a community-based sort, council meeting, sort of, without violating the Brown Act in, in your district. So, I, I think it's an excellent idea, and, and I would like to see this move forward.
You know, I mean, simplification, north, south, east, and west, and center of town for the mayor, or whatever.
Yeah, we had, the mayor can come to all of them.
Yeah.
You know, because you have to represent the whole city.
Yeah. Correct. But, I mean, if you want simplification, north, south, east, and west are the four quadrants for the four people. And, and it's, it's not quite that simple with all the goofy lines.
No, it's not, because, yeah.
But, yeah. But I mean, it would still be a community in your area event, that you represent. And I like that idea. And then if we did four or five, it wouldn't make any difference to me if we did, if we did four events, north, south, east, and west, and, and then, and then if we did five with, with something, I, I, there's a lot of good ideas here. But giving the staff a chance to, to visualize this is, is a great idea.
Well, with all four districts, you know, as the mayor running at large, or representing at large, you would be a part of all four districts.
Sure.
And certainly, that would be my intention, is to invite the mayor, as well as, you know, our chief of police, our fire chief, our, you know, public works, our community development department. Because I, I think when people feel like they have a buy-in, and they have an understanding of how their community runs, then they have a tendency to be, you know, feeling like they're a part of it. I guess I said in the beginning, they have a buy-in. But when people are just commuting, you know, back and forth to the bay, or for those who are working here, when I heard tonight that, you know, a lot of people, I guess it was at the college, didn't even know what was going on downtown. And, you know, this whole work, reworking of trying to revitalize our downtown and build it up, that's kind of a part of the whole process, is that these young people are learning that there is a downtown, and there's something else to do down there, or someplace else to go shopping. So, with each council member being able to have a get-together in their district, whether it's a park, or a blocked street, or whatever, and people come together, it, it's, it's a beginning. And you may not have a lot of people in the beginning, but as these things move forward, then I think, you know, I have a, a good feeling that more and more people will begin to come out.
Well, I like the idea. And, and I just, I want to make sure that, you know, what the police and fire department did for this last get-together with 2,000 people, that, you know, that could be the community event, and where it's, it's representing everyone. Because they did a wonderful job, and, and I'd sure like to see that keep going and grow. So, that was a, that was a monumentous, monumental event. And, and we, we don't want to trounce on that. And, and then with the, the other neighborhood stuff, it's, I think all these ideas are coming together, and I think giving staff time to, to look at this, and, and, and run with your ideas, a great idea. So, we still have a couple of people that want to talk. Mr. Freya?
Oh, I wholeheartedly support the idea, whether you use a neighborhood watch format, or whether you do, do a council district format. You could even, you could even call a meeting at that location, if you're, you know, there's no reason not to do that. But, and, but if it's just a social event, and maybe informational for staff, there's no, there's no reason that council can't all show up. They don't violate the Brown Act if you show up someplace publicly, or in the same place at the same time, and don't transact any business. So, you know, I think it's a great idea. It's just a matter of staff working out the, gets to work out all the details. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Freya, or Silveira?
I, I, too, I agree that it's good ideas. It's just a couple of things that I would caution against, is just making sure, more specifically, that you're not doing them close to election time, because then that could be considered, you know, as, as a campaign event, and especially, you know, you're the incumbent, and now you're using city resources to, to get a leg up over the competition. So, that's just things when staff comes back with kind of their, you know, their, their ideas on how you would do this. That would be one thing I would be worried about, is, you know, if this happened now, Mr. Freya's up, and my seat's up, and we had a deal over in Mr. Freya's district, or a deal with my district, if I was running again, then somebody could use that against you, and say that you're, you know, you're campaigning on the city's dime. I, listen, it's out there, and I, and I don't trust people that wouldn't. The other thing is, is ultimately, there would be a cost associated with it, and we would need to make sure that we budgeted for it. Right? So, but I, I think that it's good ideas, and, and if you can, Mrs. Lewis said it earlier, is if you get buy-in from people, then they believe in their government, and, and you know, I just, it's, I got a phone call today. Some lady called my city hall, or, you know, voicemail line, and I called her back, and, and I, man, they were, I think they were pretty surprised that they got a phone call back, for one, and, and just with a really simple question, but they just needed some guidance on where they would go to start the process if their neighborhood wanted to put in a speed home. Right? And so if we, if you can take care of that through these community meetings, that would be a good thing.
City manager, I'd say, to his credit, he, when we talked this week, and, and he told me about this agenda that was coming up, he's, he discussed that very thing about off-year for events. So, it, it would happen that if, if the mayor had an at-large one, it would be between his running. And he's already, he's already put that in his notes from this Monday. So, thank you for bringing that up, and, and he's already thought of it, so that, that's wonderful. So, it wouldn't be a campaign event, and, and it'd work out well. So, with that, would you like to make a motion? I would say to direct staff to research events throughout our, throughout our city, that would either be information, cover a wide range of, of, of subjects.
Okay.
And, and then, then he can come back to us and narrow it down.
Okay.
Okay?
I'd like to make a motion, please, to direct staff to look into this, this agenda item, and perhaps come to back this at a later time to discuss it.
No problem. Okay, Mrs. Lewis?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion by Johnson Santos, and second by Lewis, to bring this item back for, for discussion and, and further direction. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Very good. Okay, let's go on to advisement of public notices. Two reports. Director Elms?
Yes. So, we, the first item is a mobile vendor permit for A1 water quality. They are proposing to have a mobile trailer at 1248 East Pacheco Boulevard, which is Town and Country Liquor. They will be closing their doors in the new Save Mart Center, A1 Quality Water. And as they are completing the site plan and tenant improvements of their property that they've been renovating for the past 10 years, this would be a temporary intermediate interim issue, or, or a process for them to have this trailer at Town and Country Liquor. So, the planning commission will be discussing that item, and then a proposed ordinance for residential onsite parking and paved surfaces. This is an item that was brought forward from, direction from the city council to address residential parking and paved surfaces. Though, those items will be discussed on Wednesday, September 12th, at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Let's go on to item 11, city manager's report.
Just a quick thank you to the effort being put forward by the downtown property owners and merchants. It's very exciting, great to see the momentum and energy. I look forward to working with that group. HHW event, Fall Cleanup, September 22nd. Thank you to Jennifer Joaquin for bringing that forward to us. And that's it tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, let's go on to city council member reports, item 12. Tonight, we'll start with Mrs. Lewis.
Mr. Mayor, I want to thank our chief of police, and the entire department, and also our fire department for the wonderful national night out that we experienced here in Los Banos. Since I've been on council, it's been the absolute best that we've had. And to see all the people out, and just congregating together and having fun was pleasurable. And I think the taco trucks helped a lot, too. So, it was a really good idea. And, and Stacy, it made me think back on when we passed that ordinance for vendor trucks, how maybe at some point, you know, this council can look at working with staff to plan an event, maybe at the Pacheco Park, where we can bring in other food-type trucks for, I don't know, a cook-off. maybe at the Pacheco Park where we can bring in other food type trucks, uh, for, uh, I don't know, a cook-off or just a tasting or something, you know, to get people out in the community. Uh, so it was a success and so I want to thank, uh, uh, Chief Breezy for, uh, that, that particular idea and to the staff that helped you plan that. I also had the opportunity on the 20th of August to, uh, travel to Sacramento for a water rally, which our assemblyman has been fighting for quite some time about the decrease of water that, uh, our farmers are getting here in the valley. And, um, there, you know, it's, there, there's a lot going on, but to try to make this story short, uh, they're looking at decreasing up to, want, the, the state water board wants to decrease up to 40% more water than what we're getting now, diverting that into, um, uh, the Sacramento, what is it?
Delta.
Delta, thank you, uh, for smelt and for salmon. And there's already been research, proven research that, uh, the salmon don't need that level of water because it, it really pushes them further away from, you know, out into the ocean with that drift of water, rather than the, the smaller flow of water that they need to go upstream, spawn and reproduce. But with that, all of that aside, um, uh, our, uh, uh, representative, uh, has sent us emails, Adam Gray, uh, giving us kind of like the bottom line detail that, uh, Governor Brown has, um, wants to get a twin, twin aqueduct down into the LA area to bring more water down there and into the San Francisco area. And after proposition one passed, um, the, it, uh, the Bay Area, San Francisco and LA were assured that they were going to have their water, uh, reserves built, their dams. And so they made agreements with the state. And of course, we didn't get, you know, the monies from Prop 1, uh, for our dams down here in the full amount that we were expecting to. So, the long and short of it is, the board hasn't made the final decision that I know of as of today. Uh, it's made national news. Um, San Francisco's running a little bit scared because the water rights for farming trumps the water rights that they would get. So there, there is, you know, some fright on their part that they're going to be restricted, which they haven't been. And they're getting like quality water from Hetch Hetchy. So, uh, it was a very good rally. Uh, there were a lot of speakers there, a lot of our elected officials, uh, officials from the federal level that were there. I'm hoping that this board has some really hard consideration about what they're doing. Um, and if this happens, that means that there's more surface water that's going to be drained away from the valley, um, which is not good because there are communities within the valley that are suffering already for water. So, um, stay in touch with your, uh, leaders in the state of California and those that don't serve you in your district. Uh, contact them and let them know what your feelings are about water. Sometimes we kind of neglect these things until they happen to us and then it's too late. But, uh, the state of California is on this crazy tangent of just wanting to take away more water from the Central Valley, uh, which is the growing Mecca for the United States as far as farming is concerned. So, um, I, I was really happy to be able to go up there and be a part of this rally and I hope that something good turns out, uh, for our valley in regards to the participation of people who went there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Let's go on to Mr. Silveira.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I was just going over with the city manager. Um, there'll be, I have four more meetings left as a council member, so hopefully Ms. Johnson Santos deals back to us, uh, before I get off. But, um, other than that, Mr. Mayor, again, the, I know Ms. Lewis already said it, but the national night out was crazy. It was, um, I never seen lines for tacos so long and I think that all the taco vendors ran out of meat at some point and had to go bring out more. And it was really cool to see all the people out there and so I know the chief will be on it, but I'm thinking that you do, you tie that with the dollar tacos, um, better, better plan on a little bit because word traveled fast. Uh, actually, my parents were going to come into town and go to it and I, I told them, I was like, I appreciate you guys wanting to be here, but you, you're probably better off not coming out because you're going to be waiting in line for at least an hour for tacos. Um, so anyways, good job on that. It was nice seeing everybody out there, seeing folks interact, especially with our PD officers, you know. It's, it's, I recently participated in a, in a, um, a video for the county and, and somebody says, oh, well, you know, you're using county resources to, um, to, to make this video. And it's, to me, it just goes to show that our officers are all human beings. They, they put their pants on one leg at a time, just like you and I do. Um, you know, they can, they can get out and they can have fun, um, just like we all do. And so I, I think it was a good thing. Uh, so National Night Out was a, was a great event. I did go to the water rally, um, up there and Adam Gray has been a champion for, for our water cause. Um, I still think, I know it's not a, a Republican or Democrat thing, but I still think Adam Gray is the only Republican that we have representing us, at least if you live in Los Banos, um, even though he has a D behind his name. Uh, but anyhow, he's, he's, he's fighting the good fight. He is, and it's, and what he's finally starting to make some of these Bay Area folks, these, these very liberal Bay Area state senators and assembly members understand is, is they're starting with the Stanislaus and the Merced and the San Joaquin River or the Tuolumne. And then when they get done, they're going to start moving to the Sacramento River and they're going to, they're going to keep going to these other places. And, and the most frustrating part about it is, is you have a five-person, unelected appointed bureaucrats by the governor that unilaterally just make these decisions. And it's, they want 40% unimpaired flows down those rivers. So what does that mean? That means that 40% of the water that flows down those rivers cannot be used for anything else but going to the ocean. That's what it means. And so, I mean, and it's the, one of the, in my time in government, one of the first times where across party lines, across different, uh, agencies within government, you had city government, you had county government, state government, federal government, you had school districts there. You just, because it affects everybody in our valley. And, 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 and the folks up there in San Francisco, their pristine water that comes out of Hetch, Hetchy is, is in jeopardy of them not, they're, they're going, maybe going to lose that. And then, and then I'll leave you with this is, at the time that we were hosting our water rally to stop the state water grab, the environmental side had theirs on the opposite side of the Capitol building. And I would say, Ms. Lewis, there was probably 2,000 people at our rally. Um, what I was told is the rally across the deal had more speakers than they did actually people out in the audience. I saw a picture of it. It was very dismal. But they got the ear of those liberal, um, Felicia Marquez, don't forget that name. She's a very evil, evil person. She's, she's the one that, that heads the, the, uh, state water resource control board. She's, she's the worst kind of, um, bureaucrat because she'll look you in the face and, and you'll, you'll, you'll plead your heart to her on, on why or what she's about to do and how it's going to ruin your, your livelihood or whatever. And she'll look at you and she'll make you think that she's sympathetic and then she'll just go right behind you and she'll, she's going to do what she wants to do anyway. So I really don't have use for people like that. Um, anyhow, Adam Gray, I hope he continues to, uh, keep the good fight. And I know that there's letters that come across, um, I've sent some to the mayor before and to Alex, where you have, you know, local groups that are like, hey, would you guys sign on to this letter to the water resource board? And, and I hope that this council continues to, to be out in front on those and supporting, you know, these different groups that are trying. Because if it's, it's happening to the folks on the east side of the county today, once they get their way there, I promise you, it's going to come back to where it affects all of us. And then the other thing is, is that as they take surface water, what is that going to do? It's going to force people to go to, I'm sorry Lucy, I know I'm taking a long time here. Uh, uh, it's going to force people to start pumping water, which is going to deplete our groundwater resources. So it's, it is a huge deal. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's go on to, uh, Mrs. Santos. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Freya, you're next. Sorry.
Okay. Right over me. Um, but, uh, yeah, National Night Out was a, a big hit. It was super successful. And, uh, you couldn't ask for more. A lot, a lot of positive energy there. A lot of positive energy here tonight with the Downtown Association and it's, it's a very good feeling. Um, the community is, is, is feeling good, um, about things we're doing and the way the, the city is going. And I'm very pleased, I'm very pleased to hear that. Um, Alex, thank you. Um, we have all the Downtown Association, but the city manager that reaches out and connects all of that together with our staff here, uh, you and Stacy and all our, our staff, is what's making that happen. You, everybody has to be on the same page to make big things happen, make them hap, happen well. So I appreciate that very, very much. And regarding water, sometimes they quote Twain, but, uh, uh, they're not sure if it came from Mark Twain or not, but whiskey's for drinking and water's for fighting over.
Thank you. Mrs. Santos?
Thank you. Uh, short and sweet again. Um, thank you to everyone for the Downtown, um, Association and everything that's going on down there. It's going to look wonderful. I was at National Night Out. Chief Breezy was taking a while to pass out things, um, but it was a very nice event. Thank you so much for everything. So, leave it at that.
Thank you. Well, all has been said, uh, I was at the water rally also and, uh, and it's good to see Mrs. Lewis and, uh, and Mrs. Lewis rode up in a bus with us. And I got to tell you, Mr. Silveira, riding in a bus that was staffed with, uh, with farmers and, and the food that the farmers brought for us to consume on the trip, uh, yeah, those are the people you want to go with. You'll never starve, I'll tell you that much. So it was, it's just a lot of fun on a bus that, uh, they were up there. So Mrs. Lewis and Mr. Silveira were also there and, and, uh, and I don't want to belabor this. They've said it all. And just listen to what they said because they speak truth. Everyone here, this day, speaks truth about the, uh, uh, the, the water and, uh, we don't want to lose it. Uh, National Night Out, uh, thank you chiefs, uh, just absolutely wonderful. Let's do that again. Just, just a great event. So with that, I'm going to go to item 13. Uh, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to subdivision section A of section, uh, subdivision A of section 54956.9 of the government code. Name of case, Tam Lam, Tan Lam versus the City of Los Banos, United States District Court, Eastern District of California, Item B, conference with labor negotiators pursuant to government code section 54957.6. Agency designated representative, city manager Rajus, city attorney Vaughn, city clerk, human resources director Maloney, finance director Williams, police chief Breezy, legal counsel Tufo, employee organizations, Los Banos Police Office Association, LBPOA, Los Banos Police Sergeant Association, LBPSA, and Los Banos Police Dispatchers Community Service Officers Association, LBPDCSO. And item C, public employee annual performance evaluation pursuant to government code section 54957, title, city manager. If there's anything to report, we will do so after we return from closed session. If not, you're not with us, uh, at that time because you have tuned out. Uh, we, uh, appreciate you being here tonight and, uh, have a good evening and we'll be back to report out. Thank you. So you're coming tomorrow night, good?
Where? Oh, your thing, it's at 5:30, yeah.
Yeah, good. Good, good, good.
Okay, there until 6:30.
That'd be wonderful. Understood. Understood. I'm just.